This is a town council meeting of North Grandford, Connecticut, Tuesday, April 20, 2021, and the town council chamber is at 7:06 PM.
Yeah.
We'll start with a salute to the flag. All right, Jess, you want to start with the roll call?
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Judy. Counselor Downs.
Here.
Counselor Fronin.
Here.
Counselor Goode.
Here.
Counselor Felicia.
Here.
Mayor Big Leno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Here.
Okay, next we'll move into the minutes of previous meetings. First one is March 30, 2021, Budget Workshop, at 6:30.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Jess?
Sure. Counselor Angeloni.
You can just say all.
Yeah, we can do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is April 6, 2021, WPCA and Town Council Special Meeting, at 7 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, who's that, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, next is April 6, 2021, Budget Hearing for Year 2021-2022, at 8 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is April 13, 2021, Budget Workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Hi, Mike. Same people, just Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna...
Abstain.
Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, too. All right, next we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of commissions, boards, and...
Mr. Mayor, before we start that, I'd like to make a motion to move Item 8A, Budget Deliberations for Fiscal Year 2021-2022, up to this point, before we go into the regular town council meetings.
Okay.
Just to give us enough time to allow Anthony to come up with the question and everything else for later on in the budget. So, to move item, just A, from unfinished business.
Just A, okay. I need a motion.
Oh, you did, Marie, okay, Marie. Ron?
Rose and Marie. Rose made the motion, and Marie's second.
Okay. Did you get it, Jess?
Yep.
Okay. All right, then, we'll go into that, then. 8A, that's under unfinished business, budget deliberations for year 2021-2022, then I have for year 2021-2022, budget deliberations. General, I'm gonna group these all together. General Government Services, Capital Improvement Plan.
Mayor, if I could, I don't think you had an actual vote after you did the motion in the second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay. Like I said, I'll group them together, General Government Services, Capital Improvement Plan, Debt Service, and Education.
Okay, so let's just start with General Government Services. At our last meeting, last week, there were some questions that we had. We didn't take some actions on some of the things, and there were some corrections that Anthony came up with based on our discussion. So, we're just gonna start. So the first one is under Town Manager, Account 4125. We have been talking about HR services, and based on the Bloom-Shapiro study that was done, and so I would like to make a motion to add to, but, 40, to account 4125.320, other contractual fees to start for an HR consultant on a part-time basis for the year. And I'd like to make a motion to add $20,000. Basically, I just used estimated 40 hours a month at roughly $45 an hour. This was a number that, we were talking about shared services possibly with the Board of Education, and this was a number that was given to us by the superintendent. So I just, you know, that comes out to about $16,000 something. I just rounded it to $20,000 to give us a number to start with for this year, so that's how I got the $20,000.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any further discussion?
So, this would be like a consultant, wouldn't it, like a regular physician for the first year? Is that what you're saying?
Right, to establish, just because we don't know if it's a full-time position for someone, so we want to get a little bit of history and data as to exactly what this person would do, how much work they do, and if we see that we have to change it during the year, that it's more than what we had anticipated, we can always go to contingency, but it at least gives us a starting point.
It's a good idea.
Okay, any further discussion? Can we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next one is under Central Services. And there's a motion from Anthony, which was a budget correction, and I'd like to make a motion to decrease the telephone account in Central Services, Account 4136.301, by $6,180, and increase the telephone account in the Fire Department, Account 4220.301, by 620, to correct the accounting of the TPX bills in the 21-22 budget.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by, Ron, was that you?
Yes.
Counselor Felicia. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Okay, the next one under Central Services is the secretarial position, which was changed, it's currently 25 hours a week, a part-time position, and it was changed in our budget book to a full-time position. And we discussed this at our last meeting, we've been discussing it throughout the year since this was brought up to us. And at this time, my feeling is, is that the Park and Rec Commission has a position in their budget that has not been filled. It is a part-time position, and given, when asked, Central Services, how much time the secretary devotes or works with Social Services up in the Park and Rec Building in the senior center, the estimate given to us was 10 hours a week, approximately 10 hours a week. So, I think that that position that has not been filled, that they are looking to fill in the money is in the budget, that that work right now can be also assigned to this person coming into Park and Rec and try it out, and also with other Park and Rec staff. So, I would like to make a motion to reduce it from a full-time back to the current position. So, to do that, I'm just gonna combine everything into one, all of the different account numbers. Anthony gave me the account number, so my motion is to bring the secretary back to 25 hours, and that would be a decrease in Account 4136.101 by $50,142, an increase in Account 4136.102, part-time wages of $35,816, a decrease in pension and social security in Account 4136.120 of $2,665, and a decrease in medical insurance in Account 4734.721.0821 of $3,388.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any further discussion on this?
Just a clarification, Rose, so this is just the, putting it back to where it was?
Correct.
Okay. Because I would like to comment in terms of going forward, in terms of, I did meet with Rec, and I did meet with Social Service, and we had a meeting in terms of, I think there's a plan, and we've got some alternatives to address that situation. So, before you get to the second half, I guess, is what we could talk about in terms of options.
Okay. Can I have a vote, Jess?
Can I ask you, can someone clarify for me, is this a full-time, so, I wasn't fully following, so is there going to be a full-time resource provided to purchasing, or how is it gonna be?
It'll stay the way it is right now.
Stay the way it is.
So she currently has a secretary that's 25 hours a week, and has been for...
When you say she, in...
The purchasing.
Secretary.
So, it's Central Services Department, which is the purchasing.
All right, so that's gonna stay the way it is? Does that answer the need, or you're saying you have a solution?
No, we have other options, that, other than looking at the position that's unfilled coming back in Rec, there might be a better, more efficient way, options to do that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Anything else? Can we have a vote, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, so, is it this alternative solution that Anthony has on this piece of paper to me, 10 hours per week for half a year?
Yeah, that's one, and there's another budget-neutral alternative. That, I think, what you got presented there gets a person on site there. It's not optimal, but in that scenario, we would have to, you gotta understand the, I think you do, Rose, the space constraints within the building. Board of Ed is looking for space, we're looking for space, and in terms of putting another body there, it's a very difficult proposition, so what we're calling for is, and it's not ideal, but a hot seating type of position where the person gets in is gonna be sharing, has a desk within the Rec Department that could function and help Louisa in that scenario. So, for lack of a better word, co-sharing a desk, hot seating, whatever you want to call it, but it gets through the peak, seven, eight months of that peak season, I think we calculated at seven, so could get, could get help, but there's obviously a cost to that.
Okay, so, are you, are you, what, how would you like us to handle this? Do you want to propose this, or do you have another means that you would?
No, I think I would, I think I would propose that.
You would like to propose this? Okay.
And I recognize that there's a, there's a cost to that.
Right. So, the alternative solution...
For the record, I prefer solution one, that I put in the budget, and having...
I understand that.
And having a full-time person with the projects that we have, I mean, moving from 25 to 35 was, was the best solution for us, but I've said my piece.
Right, but if, and that's fine, I understand that point. My thinking on this is that if this, if the person works 10 hours a week for Social Services, and by giving them an alternative, that they don't have to use that secretary in, in Central Services, you've gained that 10 hours back. So then she would have the 10 hours back, which is what the proposal was, to increase from 25 to 35 hours, so the hours are back there. And, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at this during the year to see once, once they prove their point. At this point in time, nothing has been proven to the council that this person had to be increased on here, and, and all of the solution, or the things that we had proposed during the, or talked about during the year, nothing came back to us as far as how it could be handled, when we asked on certain things. So, I'm not opposed to looking at it, once the year is going on, and you can show us that this is, but we came up, you know, we're now presented with an alternative solution, and to me, I think, I would like to try this, you know, people can, I'll make the motion, and then people can vote the way that they want on it, but I think this is a start to that. So the alternative solution that Mike is talking about here is having 10 hours per week for a half a year, having a seasonal secretary at Social Services to help them out during the busy season, and the cost to that between wages and social security alternative on that is approximately $4,700.
And you wouldn't fill that other part-time position, you'd leave it open?
No, well, that's a completely separate, I would, that's a Rec issue that they would want to fill, and when they think is ready, and I think they need it, and it just gets complicated, because that's a program, program worker, and again, Jess, I think, is here, can speak to that, but we had a long conversation about how it doesn't quite mix or fit for what Social Services is looking for.
What doesn't?
I'm sorry?
What, what, what doesn't fit?
I can, I can speak to that. So the program worker position was only open for one year, and that person physically runs Bingo, transportation, and things like that, so to ask that person to be a secretary for 10 hours a week takes away services for our seniors. We haven't needed that position because of COVID, we haven't been open running Bingo and things like that, but we're reopening, we're running Bingo as of tomorrow, so we're looking to fill that as soon as possible. So, by taking that position away from our department, it would be limiting what we can offer for services.
So I'd like to make a motion to increase Account 4504.102 by $4,698, and increase Account 4504.120 by $68.12, and this is for a seasonal secretary at Social Services.
I'll second that. Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Goode. Any further discussion?
Yes, did I miss something, or did we say we had, there was a secretary position that we're discussing that's going to drive the bus?
No, that's...
Is that what I just heard?
No, no, that is the, that is the part-time position that has been open at Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Which, that was a, the part-time position, as Jess explained, was, is a program director for the seniors, and so if we were thinking of, that person could be the secretary, help out in Social Services, she's saying that would take away from that position, running those programs.
Take away from Bingo time.
So, we're not losing anything at the Senior Center?
No.
No. Just to clarify. Okay, anything else?
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right.
Okay, the next one was under Police Department, the secretary, the budget showed an increase of 15% in wages, and so Anthony looked at it, and there was an error in calculation, so the motion to fix that is as follows. I'd like to make a motion to decrease the full-time police account 4210.101 by $7,878, decrease the pension and social security account 4210.120 by $603, and decrease the defined benefit pension contribution, Account 4734.731.0821 by $8,766. And this is just to collect, to correct a budget calculation.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next account was ambulance. This is on contractual services. This is an account that has traditionally, over the years since we started, ambulance services has run in the red, but the, no one has ever denied a 911 call for an ambulance, the service runs at 100%. And this last year, they probably saw a little bit more in a decrease in revenues just because of COVID and everything else, and the payments and the number of calls. So, the, the account was increased dramatically to try and make up that shortfall, but I would like to make a motion to decrease Account 4225.308 by $50,000. This still gives an increase of $25,000 over last year's amount, and in talking to Anthony, it's an account that we can keep adding to each year till we get to a point where we're in the black, and that can vary from year to year, depending on the collection rate and the types of calls that they have, but we're working towards that, and so the, the decrease of $50,000, rather than take it all in one year, that was the premise of decreasing it somewhat.
Second.
Don't count that on your bank account. Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Vote, please.
All in favor?
Oh, any discussion? I'm sorry. No, okay, Jess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, the next account was the refuse removal, Account 4302. So we had discussion on this account, and I know later on in the agenda is the contract for refuse, and based on the information that is, was given to us on the contracts, it seems like the amount that we have budgeted, that there might be some room to decrease that, and I just want to confirm that. Right now, we have budgeted 1.429 for refuse removal, and based on the first year of either contract, we have, it looks like we're over budget in that account.
Yes.
So...
Just depends, yeah, right.
So I'm not sure how much of a, because whatever the contract is, we have to add in also the rebates of the condominiums, correct, into that amount? How about the non-procitable bulky waste white goods? Does that have to get added back also? That's in our, in, or is that part of, that amount that's in here, is that part of the contracts? Michelle?
I don't think it do... That line item, it's always been kept in there for, sometimes when Fran picks up stuff off the roads, be it items that people throw somewhere, it's above and beyond the contract, Fran's dumpster, and there's usually a bill for Fran's department to get rid of items that are picked up off the road beyond the normal pickup.
Probably treat that like the rebates, keep that in there, like the rebates.
Okay.
And the rebate is an estimated number on the form that Anthony comes up, and that usually shows fall, fall short, sometimes in a given year, so it just stays within the budget.
Okay. Well, based on those two numbers having to stay in here, and even though the two contract numbers that we have to decide on later what's happening, it's my position that we just leave the number in there as is, because if you add, that's roughly $150,000 that you have to add back to the contract numbers in here, so we're gonna be close to that number. I mean, it's still gonna be lower, but I don't know that it's, in my mind, it's, it's not worth it to make any deduction as far as I'm concerned on it.
I agree.
The next item is Public Works. So we discussed adding a superintendent mid-year in Franny, this is an item that Franny has been looking for, for the last couple of years. He did take it out of his budget this year because he felt an arborist was more important, which is in the budget, and in previous negoti, or talks with him and everything else, I think a lot of us felt that the superintendent was a good starting point to start planning, having a succession plan, and planning for the future on there. So I would like to make a motion to add Public Works Superintendent, effect starting January 1st of 2022, and I'm just gonna do all the accounts in one motion, and this is based on information that Anthony gave us. So, Account Number 4305.101, $41,500. Account 4305.120 for pension, $3,735. 4305.120 also for ICMA of $750, and 4305.120 for FICA and Medicare, $3,174.75. Account 4734.721.082 for medical insurance, $11,844. Life insurance, Account 4734.741.082 for 102.60, and Account 4734.734.820 for LTD, Long-Term Disability, $307.10. So it's a total cost of $61,413.45.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Plicia. There was one, right?
It was both of us, please.
Oh, okay.
Dealer's choice.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that, and I know Rose didn't mean it that way, but it was along the lines of the talk. It's not just succession planning. We also recognize that Franny has pulled in a million different directions and does a phenomenal job. So we also thought it was important to, you know, give him the support and allow him to continue to, you know, help everybody else out in town like he does. So that's it. Feel good about it.
Okay, anybody else? We have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Mike, I like when a lot of people show up. Everybody has different ideas. Are we limited to how many people can be in here?
Yeah. Everyone's taking their seat. We're at our maximum, yeah. Are there more in the waiting? I just can't see with my back turned, but I don't know if anybody's out in the hallway or not.
What are we limited to? What are we limited to? Not that I care. I mean, I don't care if the whole town comes in here.
Yeah, no, we're at max right now.
Okay.
That's why I laid out the seats.
Okay. Sorry, Rose.
That's okay.
Go ahead, it's all yours.
Okay. And one last thing under general government is, at our finance committee meeting last week, there's an item on our agenda later on about the health insurance savings account that we had when we had the self-insurance. And that account can now be closed. And the recommendation is that instead of that money going into general fund, that it gets used to pay for our OPEB contribution, which is given to us every year. That OPEB fund is not 100% funded. We, it is funded at a much higher number than most towns. We're in the 80%, I think it was like 83% that we were funded. And so the recommendation later on in our meeting is that that money, that to close out that health insurance savings account, we can now do it. All claims have been paid, and this is the money that was left over from the self-insurance, would go into the OPEB account instead of the general fund. And by doing that, we are able to decrease the budget in the operating transfer for OPEB by $45,000. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease our OPEB contribution by $45,000.
It's actually 50 in there, Rose, as I was saying.
Oh, okay, so $50,000.
Second.
Okay, so it's 50?
50,000.
Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any further discussion? We have a vote, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Okay, that's all that I have under general government services. I don't know if anyone else has anything else. If not, we'll just go to the next item, capital improvement plan. Oh, wait, no, there's one other thing on general. I think this falls under general government. Is additional fund balance? Does that come under general government?
Yeah, either way.
Okay. So in the questions that we had asked Anthony prior to the budget season, one of the questions was, what was our fund balance? And as a percentage of the previous year's budget, that's what they measured on. And he gave that information to us for the last three years. And as we saw, the fund balance grew tremendously, in my mind. It was like a million-dollar increase, along with the percentage also increased by a percent, which is a very healthy fund balance. And it definitely will help us in bond, in our bond rating, and when we go out for bonds, which we will be going out for shortly, just due to all of the construction projects that we have. And there is an amount in the proposal, in our budget proposal, of using $350,000 from fund balance to help bring down the increase in taxes. And this actually was a decrease over the last few years. So I would like to make a motion to add another $450,000 from the fund balance to help reduce our mill rate increase. So it would be a total of $800,000. 350,000 that was already proposed in the budget, and this is an additional $450,000.
I'll second that. Okay.
What is the percentage that we're at right now?
We were at 17.... Let's see here.
Anthony said 17 and 1/2.
Is 15% still recommended?
No, our target per, so we're at 17.69%. And the target per our policy is 10%.
Yep, okay.
So this additional $450,000 is roughly a half a percent off of that 17.69 on there. Last year, at the end of 2019 fiscal year, our fund balance percentage was 15.82. So we're still far above our target policy, and I think it's still a healthy fund balance that we have there. And as it's been explained to us by Anthony at other meetings, and I know Tara, you are new to this, but the number that's in there, so if this was $800,000, if our revenues are higher than expected and our expenses are lower, we might not necessarily use that whole $800,000 because of the other parts of the budget exceed what we have or less. It would be less, and it's just a rolling number, so it might not end up to be $800,000. But that would be the max that we would take out of the fund balance in order to balance the budget.
Because if you said our max is usually 10%, at what point are we, or is there a plan at what point we would not continue growing it beyond that and use it to refuse taxes or, you know, other opportunities?
I think we would just look at it from year, to see once what it grew, if there was growth in the fund balance and what percentage. It's always based on, the fund balance is based on a percentage of the prior year's budget. So to see once what that is. And it's just a decision that the council would make as to, depending on what is happening that year, as to where you would go. We would never want to go below the 10%. But the last three years, we've been at, according to this, 16.43, 15.82, and then 17.69 on there. So I think as a council, we've been very conservative and have watched that number to make sure that it stays healthy for us.
No, it's great that it's at that level. I was just thinking about, you know, the state's policy is 15%, and they've quickly reached that, and now are using that to pay off debt and improving the pension fund and other stuff pretty quickly over the last few years. So I was just curious what we have about doing those sorts of actions going forward to further improve and take advantage of that while maintaining a really, you know, robust fund network.
And I, Tara, I think, I think that's a very good point, and I think that's actually what we're trying to do this year. Because of the bonding issue, we're trying to keep it looking really good. But at the same time, we are taking from it to, like Rose said, to balance the budget and hopefully maybe even better. But it's kind of a balancing act this year.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Thanks.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? No? We have a vote? Jess, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Okay, so now we're in CIP. So at our meeting last week, we talked about the townwide maintenance reserve, and we had a breakdown of how much was left in that account. And we allocated 12,500 kind of to replenish it, so it was at the 50,000 mark again. But then in talking to Franny, he already has a list of items that to be completed by the end of this fiscal year of what was remaining in that account, the $40,000. So I would like to make a motion to add $50,000 to the townwide maintenance reserve and have it funded through the fund balance. So that Franny can start working on the projects that he has, and then this will just replenish so going forward next year, he will have, he'll have a little bit more than 50, but I'm sure he has a list that will already spend.
I would say that, Rose, is it 12, on top of the 12.5 or 12.5?
No, it's on top of the 12.5 that we already did. So this 50,000 is proposed through the fund balance.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion?
Just a question. What is it, your discussion with Franny led you to believe is that $40,000 that's left in that account is going to be completed before the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay, and what about the 12.5 that's going next year?
That's, that's...
62.5 next fiscal year?
Correct. Because we also talked about, Franny had mentioned to us last week about work that needs to be done on the auger, there's some things on the auger farm, and the lease money has not been allocated to him. We already got it for this year, and it hasn't been allocated. That was one of the things we talked about, was allocating that money for him. So basically, he would have some money in there to do some work on the auger farm before we got lease money and before we appropriated. So he would start off July 1st at 62.5.
Got it.
Okay, anybody else? Just here, a vote, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
And then under public works, under pavement overlay, I'd like to make a motion to keep the $400,000 allocated for pavement, budgeted for pavement overlay, but have $300,000 come from budget funds and $100,000 come through the fund balance. So the total request would stay at 400,000, just funding it a little bit differently. 300 through budget funds and 100,000 fund balance.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? We have a vote, please, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Okay. The next item is debt service. So at the last meeting, Anthony talked to us about how he has 195,000, or there's currently 195,000 in the budget, kind of like savings to put aside in debt service to keep debt service relatively stable so that we don't have big increases and decreases in it. Last year, we had 140,000 that was kind of in savings for debt service, and we did make a motion and took all of that away to reduce our mill rate for last year. This year, there's 195,000, and I understand what he's trying to do, and I agree with it, but I would just like to make a motion to reduce debt service by $45,000. And this would keep it at, this would keep it at 150,000 kind of to the side for debt service, so just taking some of that 195 to reduce taxes.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Plicia. Any further discussion? We have a vote, please, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
That's all that I have. There's one item left, which is education.
So we found out from Anthony that the 2% fund and the 1% fund still have a substantial amount of money in them, about $900,000, plus the Board of Education is looking at getting potentially some significant money from the federal government. So I'd like to make a motion to fund the Board of Education for 2021 through 2022 at the current level of $32,435,714. Keeping them flat.
Could you repeat those numbers again, just the...
Which part?
The 1% or 2%?
Anthony, I don't have the exact numbers. I apologize. But the 1% and the 2% are at about where?
The 1% from 1718 has got about 301,000, and the 2% from 1920, as of this printing, was about 565,000. And then there's the special access grant from last year that he gave them another 86 roughly.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Plicia. Did I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? We have a vote, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 9M, discussion and action on telecommunication tower.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed.
Any objections?
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, I think we finished 8A.
Okay. All right, we'll go back to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. The Economic Development Commission is first.
Their next meeting is May 2nd or 3rd. It's the first meeting in May.
Okay, next we have Parks and Recreation. Next, we have Parks and Recreation.
Their next meeting is next week.
Okay. Next is Police Commission.
Police Commission, you do have a copy of the minutes in your packet. Walter and I were both asked to have attendance at the meeting. Just a couple of highlights. The chief did report that he worked with the town manager preparing the home security grant for the DOC. Chief also expressed some concern about the fact that the overtime budget is quite, quite a bit over. There should be, a lot of that probably has to do with COVID, et cetera, and requirements. But there is an overdue pension account, and hopefully they'll be able to equal out in the long run. The chief is involved right now with a hiring process, and it's interesting that they have close to 85 applicants, which I think is phenomenal for North Branford. It is that time of year, and there is a usual dirt bike activity going on. However, North Branford is working with New Haven to use their resources, and also there's a potential in the state legislature where they'll be able to seize vehicles if that passes, which will help to some extent. That is a problem for many towns, and it is a problem for North Branford. Police also shared a postcard that they want to send out to folks to prevent crime, the kind of thing where people are constantly. The problem that we're having, everybody's having, the people who are getting into cars and stealing things, stealing cars. Chief and chief is also looking into a way of providing a different way of dispatch staffing. They're looking at something that North Haven is doing, and students and more of that in the future. Then again, there are some items on your agenda tonight as well, but I won't go over those. Thank you.
Thanks, Maury. All right. Next, we have Fire Commission.
Nothing new.
All right. Next is Board of Education and Town Cultural Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Next, we have Planning and Zoning Commission. Next is North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
We had our last meeting of the committee on April 14th. We approved their final bid specifications for the new police facility. We tied up all our loose ends.
Thank you. Next is Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met last week. There is an item on the agenda later on about the Health Insurance Reserve account that we talked about during the budget process. We reviewed our financial statements, where we stand right now, which is later on in the agenda. I think those were the major highlights that we had on there.
Okay. You all set, Ruth?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Next is Permanent Project Building Committee. Rusty?
Yeah. No, I don't think we have Rusty tonight. I think there was a mix-up in communication there. I apologize. They did meet last night, and the meeting was fruitful, and everything is on track. Rusty reported out of the DDR meeting with the state, which was approximately three and a half hours long, covered a lot of ground in terms of where the project is and is moving forward. They'll follow up. So they're meeting and exchanging information and talking. And there was some discussion around the square footage cost in terms of what the state looks at and what we're coming in. So there were exchanges there, and Steve Whelan, the chairman, was also on the call with the superintendent. And at last night's meeting, the chairman raised that, to which Rusty, both Rusty and Amar from Gilbane answered and are working with the state on that, in terms of what procedures or workarounds, if you will, that they need to address at that point. So they're not concerned about it at this point, and continue to work with the state. One of the things they also mentioned, and it appears here Rusty was going to speak to, is the general statute change from previous years that speaks to the fact of the process for reimbursement and following a RFQ/P process for reimbursement. So that has thrown a little bit of a wrinkle into the timing and the calendar and the schedule in terms of processing the various services that we need to do. So there are quite a bit of specs, if you will, that we've got to process. And so the committee was notified that they may indeed have to meet more than the once a week that they're meeting already, because it's that qualification, the Q component of the proposal, which means that they've got to do a review and a selection of shortlisting no more than four, and then asking those firms to then submit a proposal after that process. So again, there's going to be some work involved in the scheduling. It was already tight to begin with, and so this little wrinkle is added a little extra on our plate. So we're going to work through it. We're going to be on call with Rusty tomorrow, try to work through that. I could only suggest that, and I know the council, we just went through giving the Permanent Project Building Committee the ability to write the specs without coming here. There are going to be awards, again, that's going to require coming back to the council, and we're going to try and work that into the schedule and hope that we don't have to ask the council for a special meeting in order to keep the timeline, because June 15th is rapidly approaching, and they are working feverishly to meet deadlines. There was also an issue with the project, nothing that's insurmountable, it can't be fixed, but they were going for a variance on the height last night, and there was an issue with the posting, and so it did not happen, and they're rescheduling for two weeks. But that, I don't believe, has any bearing on pushing out the calendar or the schedule. So I will hope to have Rusty back here at the next meeting and continue to report out on the progress.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mike. You covered these next two?
Yeah.
The North Branford High School review and state statute, CGSA?
I've covered, yeah. That was what I mentioned in terms of the RFQ and NBIS. Rusty reported out that he had a report that we'll get for the infrared, for the roof membrane and something else that he, I forget. But we'll get that information in the next report.
Okay. Next is Town Managers' Report. Update on COVID-19, testing a vaccine.
Yes. So you should have also an extra report or information. You have your traditional monthly or week meeting report. We have essentially moved from 31st to 49th, so that's a trend in the right direction as far as positive cases or state ranking, based on positive cases, you know, and the all-important. In fact, these numbers, I think, are stale compared to the numbers I have now on the projections. It was asked about where our vaccination rates are, and we're doing very well in that respect in terms of having nearly 100% over 75, and well, actually 65 and older, and a total population of 51%. The information, and I hope you have it, is a separate, came via email. The Health Department is, I was asked to ask them if they could do projections in terms of your decision-making process for whether or not to hold Memorial Day parade, on what the vaccination would be. So we are, hard for him to do, but at this point, he's suggesting that we are at 68% when you look at 16 and up, in terms of the eligible population that can be vaccinated, that is vaccinated, 68%. So that number will only climb as we approach Memorial Day, and I think anything above 70 and between 70 and 90s reporting, that's when you get into the range of where you think a population has quote-unquote herd immunity. So again, not knowing what that will be, but we're at 68 now, and a little over a month or so to go, that's what they're reporting at this point. So, you know, our clinics are working, our outreach is working, we are getting shots in the arm, and I think we're doing very well, local.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Next, next is North Transfer Police Department Surplus Property.
Yeah. This came out of their last meeting and request to move both the trailer to Public Works, and that is no problem under the ordinance. I prepared a memo for you and also included the minutes of the meeting for the car for trade-in as well as the swap trailer. And the car, obviously, will get a higher value in trade-in versus auction. And so both are permissible and can be done. This is more informational for your purposes, unless there's any objection. The commission and the department would like to proceed with that, those two items.
Just a question, Mike. On the trade-in of the car, do we check whether or not it has any use? Other departments should be let down before we make a decision to trade it then?
Right. Yes. And we've already, yeah, we've already done that. Fran takes care of that for us, and mechanics.
And the conclusion is no?
Right.
The car isn't worth it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, request from Police Commission to use Law Firm of Ryan and Ryan for union negotiations.
Yeah. I'm just transmitting, again, from the meeting with a copy of the minutes, their formal request before you. We are already underway with the current firm and attorney. I expressed my opinion as to sticking with that individual, but the commission felt otherwise, and I felt it was important to bring that before you.
When I read the request for the petition for the union, they don't need to act, do they? You're asking for Bill Ryan to represent the Police Commission?
Correct. Represent the town.
And the rationale is, are you able to tease out what the rationale is, or?
I'm not sure that I'm the appropriate person to tease out the rationale. I think in some concern about responsiveness of the firm. Other than that, again, I have no qualms or issues with, and think that David has served us very well, and I'm comfortable. But I'm only one member within that team.
Is there a cost that we assume, since we've already started those negotiations? Is there any cost back, or is the cost the same in that transition, or how does that affect the cost?
It's hard to say in terms of any, I wouldn't believe any, it'd be lost time, but not cost. Again, it depends if you were looking to actually make that decision to move, and what it would cost in terms of rates, if you could negotiate the same rate. But it's really lost time, I think.
Hasn't Ryan and Ryan done it for many years?
They have been here. We have used the town hazards, right? They had been on the last go-around prior to the current firm coming.
I think they've been there about five years or more longer than that. Ryan and Ryan's been doing it.
Yeah. I'd have to go back and check, but you're all right, Mike. They have been here, and they have handled in the past.
Right.
Can I, as a member of the negotiations team, we have been working with Dave Zabel. We had a session today. I think it went very well. I could have put it well. I think it's very difficult at this point to then change on attorney. I think it appeared to me that the chief seemed pleased today with how it was going.
And certainly, I mean, if someone's here to make a real case for this, I can understand, but I don't understand if, you know, I guess I'm not hearing a real reason for this.
I mean, from my understanding, the reason we had Ryan and Ryan on past contracts is because the town attorneys that we had at that time, one of them, it was a conflict, and they wouldn't do it for the town, and they, because they represented the other side, not specifically in our town, but in other towns. And one of the town attorney's office didn't have the personnel to do it, and so that's why we engaged in another law firm. But the last contract for the police department, we did use the current law firm. So, you know, since we've had the current firm, we've had, they have done a contract for them, and they just.
Plus, I think in the last contract negotiations, a lot of stuff was cleaned up, so there isn't that much to do this time. I'm not saying there isn't some, but a lot was already cleaned up.
I just, I just brought my point out, because Ryan and Ryan has done it in the past, you know?
Right.
Maybe not last year, but, you know, the town should be aware that they didn't just pull that name out of the book.
Right. They have done it.
It's been a past practice.
Historically, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we previously had a town attorney that did not have a labor, which is a very specialized area of the law within their firm. And I think there was a need to go out for labor lawyers.
Right.
I understand that Dave Zabel, being a very capable practicing attorney, and a load to incur an additional expense, starting with another firm, when that specialty is available in our current General Counsel's Office.
I agree.
I agree, too. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Let's move. Community Events and Presentations, Proclamation, Earth Day, April 22nd, 2021. I don't know what this is, Mike.
No, 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 it's just, it's there for.
You're just stating. Okay. Okay. All right. Then we'll move to Citizen Statements and Petitions and Correspondence. Anything?
I have a citizen statement, Meg.
Go ahead, Mike.
I've been reviewing the town trash contract and found that John's is $121,026 cheaper than the other contractor that submitted a bid. However, All American states that they will pick up bulky waste, but the tipping fee will be put back onto the town, with John's, that is all included. Secondly, All American, they are building a state-of-the-art facility in Berlin, but that is not yet built, and I can't see a date of completion on that, which they cite in their letter. And it's nice to read a fancy letter written by somebody at All American Waste, who pays no taxes to our town versus the John Bazuto family, who pays $217,750 in taxes in 2020. John's in their bid states bulky waste collection twice a year, which is included in years one and two, which is no additional cost to the town. Storage, distribution, and repair of trash barrels, and trash services for the potato and corn festival are all included. No extra charges, and all extra services, I'm sure the town, with All American, any extra services such as these, the town will pay a premium price for. The town manager stated that the Wallingford Waste Plant would take North Branford trash and recycling, which was a mistake, and I believe that's the reason the bid went out again and just came back a little while ago. John stated that they have no, they have approximately 10 places to dispose of trash and material. It'd be very foolish on the town and North Branford's leadership to vote not to go with the lowest bidder, who has been our whaller for the last 10 years and has given us excellent service. That's my statement.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Mary Vigolo. I'm a resident of this town for 58 years. Spent nine terms on the town council, so I understand what you're going through. And I'm here because I was told at my last solid hazardous waste meeting that you had problems with us. And I sort of want to give you a history, how this committee became a committee. with us. And I sort of want to give you a history, how this committee became a committee. Back in the nineteen eighties, when I sat on the town council, the Department of Energy, energy, it wasn't energy then, Department of Environmental Protection had started a campaign on clean water. They discovered that what was happening was the waters being contaminated by household hazardous waste. So I said, well, somehow, after they put a law in, they said, okay, all you towns, we've got to do something about this. And we had nothing in our town to do that, so I created a committee called Hazardous Waste Committee. What we did was take care of the situation and hold different types of events, and, and we got rid of that problem. Two years later, they decided they were going to expand the recycling. And we were all doing it on glass only, so I created another committee. Now we have two committees doing environmental issues for the town. Joanne Wentworth was the mayor during this time, and she told me, why don't you make it one committee? So I made it. That's how we got the Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee. What we do is respond mostly to what the Department of Environmental Protection regulates. And we want to keep the town out of trouble. And we have had some issues with recycling, and they are on our case because they had, they had a, a set of time, how much we had to produce, and we weren't producing that. And we didn't know how else we were going to do it. But this is what this committee does. It follows DEP, whatever their regulations are, we try to get our town in order so that we are not going to be blamed for doing something we shouldn't do. Then we had... Then, then we, what we did was also, we do research. We go in and we see, how can we get rid of some of this material so it doesn't go into the waste and we have to pay for it? And one of our committee members came up with a, a program, which we call the plastic bags and things like that, which we collect. We take that out of the waste and not paying for it, and a tipping fee. The big problem that I guess you had with this was, how did we get into the, the idea of the contracts for the trash haulers? Well, all this I'm talking about's trash. All this stuff that we were dealing with is trash. And we had to somehow get in there to see that when we get a trash hauler, we have a way to get rid of the different kinds of trash that we have. So that's how we got into the contracts. We wanted to see what the heck you're going out for, because there are things we need to do, we have, the town has to do. This county, they do a lot of research, committee, they do events for you, like the e-waste collections. And Hasway Central, where we have to get out there and man that once in a while. So this is a committee that works very hard. We don't go out and say, look at us, look what we've done. We do our work. We do it for the town. And any, any, any environmental issues doing, involving trash, and anything that happens in the town, in that area, we try to take care of. So I don't know what the problem is and who hasn't heard of us, but we've been here since the nineteen eighties, when I created this committee. The other thing is, they said something about ethical. And ethics is something I'm very strong on, because I'm a commissioner on the State Board of Ethics, and I have been for ten years. So I do know my ethics. I'm also on a subcommittee, which I am the chairman of, of municipal ethics. So I'm working on that right now. So I do know ethics. Any committee I sit on is going to follow the state ethics code, because that's what I'm, I'm, you know, authority on. So what is it? Did you have a problem with us, or?
Mary, we're getting loads rejected like crazy at the, at the recycling plant.
Yes.
What is the committee doing to educate the town citizens as to what should be in recycling and what shouldn't be in recycling? And is there notices going out to the town to try to correct that? Because I haven't got a notice in my mail that anything's been rejected, or anything's going in improperly, or it's being judged improperly, or what items should be in there, what items shouldn't be in there. Should be some type of flyer coming out from your committee to the citizens to tell them why our loads are getting rejected and what they're getting rejected for.
We have been getting articles in the Totoka Times.
I mean, a mailer.
The Totoka Time, he gives us a page of what is and what's out, and what you shouldn't be doing. Now, I had suggested that what we need to do is to get our hauler to tell us when they go up to Mirror, what area do they pick up? Because now we can zero in on the area, because there's four or five areas I think they pick up a day. And we haven't gotten any results on that yet. We don't know, because our hauler hasn't told us which particular area of the town is causing this problem. Or is it all of them?
We used to get a cardboard flyer, and I know you remember it, of what you could put in your trash and what you can't put in your trash. And it used to come out in the Totoka Times, or it was mailed to people. Since the Totoka Times doesn't, you know, hit every household in town, maybe we should mail out a flyer, tell why.
The authorities up there in Hartford.
Say on our garbage pail what we can and can't put in.
Yeah, but the flyer was in the Totoka, it comes out at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, it's on the lid.
Yeah. But, but DEP keeps changing those, you know, what's in and what's out. And that's why, you know, my committee's always sitting there saying, oh, okay, this isn't in anymore, this is out. Like, they're taking your paper and shredding it. That goes in the trash now, because it contaminates the recycling. It's like the bottles. We told DEP, get rid of those bottles out of the, out of that recycling. And because when they're crushed, that whole load of recycling's no good.
That's what we try to educate some of the town people on, you know? And if it's a letter, if it's a letter to go out, if it's a flyer to go out, or something.
We don't like this, this contamination. And, and Hartford's telling us, educating seems not to be working with the people. So what else do we do, other than knock on doors? I'm not going to go out and open their trash cans. And the whole committee said they're not going to, he said we're not allowed to. So if you guys have some ideas?
Mary, I'd just like to address one thing. I don't think anybody had a problem with the committee. It was the way that the two contracts were presented to us. They were not apples to apples, and it appeared as though it was jaded towards one side. We, we appreciate the time and energy that you guys devote to the town. It, it certainly had nothing to do with the committee. It just, the way it was presented to us rose, rose, or gave us some questions, and it didn't look exactly like it should have. So I don't know who that falls on, but it certainly wasn't directed at the committee.
Okay, well, we are working on that recycling business. And I think we zeroed in on one section right now. And I think the only thing we can do is then to bombard it with flyers or something at each door and say, would you please read this and make sure this is what you put in your recycling bin?
Well, it's usually a colored card that comes in, so it's either blue, yellow, orange, right?
Right.
Isn't that, you get that annually, I think?
Yeah.
I keep it in drawers, like, I don't want it in the refrigerator in the garage.
Well, if you have any ideas, if you have any problems, I'm in the phone book and everybody else knows me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sure.
Only thing about that, I was trying to be not loud, but it's disgusting the way this bid went. When this man, and he and I've been talking, he's supposed to be out enjoying his new granddaughter. What's he doing? He's finding out all the facts about this contract. Not the cherry picking stuff at the bottom. There was so much misinformation that you never got, until today, I believe. And it's just North Branford as usual, and it's got to stop. When there's something this heavy on the line, it's got to be treated professionally, not word of mouth, not, I think this should happen. The facts have got to be made, they've got to be made available, and they've got to be made available to the right people, you people who have to make decisions in a timely manner. Ron said it. It was a zoo, and from day one. And you know I'm not happy with commissions and the way they, they orbit in their own little orbits, but they never come back to the main nucleus, you guys. You don't know what they're doing until it's too late to give them advice. And it's not just that commission, it's others. So, again, we mishandled this one, and it's got to stop. There's got to be more communications, the information flow's got to continue, and it's got to move professionally and quickly and properly to the due people it's due to. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Okay, let's move into resignations and appointments. The first one I have is the appointment of Susan DeSilver, the Hazardous Waste and Recycle Committee, has an alternate term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Resume is attached.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Diamond, you in? Counselor Fawnin? Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Can I have, you know what, just give me a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Downs?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Bowd?
Yes.
Counselor Kletchia?
Yes.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Okay, next I have appointment of Victor Pedeandria to the Permanent Project Building Committee, has an, has an alternate to replace Robert Donnelly, term to expire eleven thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Was it Mike? Did you, that was you? Okay. Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Duddy. Any discussion?
Yeah, this was on our last agenda, and it was tabled because we were waiting to see once, because Victor already is a member of the Police Commission, and just wondering if he could serve both on the Police Commission and the Permanent Project Building Committee. And it was brought to our attention that there was a ruling, there was an opinion from a former town attorney, which our town attorney, Vin Marino, looked up, and there's a copy of it in here. And the long and short of the opinion is that because the Permanent Project Building Committee is not an office or a position under the government of the town of North Branford, that is allowed. So Victor would be able to serve on the Police Commission and on the Permanent Project Building Committee. So that's why it was on our agenda here. It was brought back. We have the ruling now, so I wanted to stay.
As an aside, I thought it was interesting, because I read all that, that at one time the fire commission must have been an elected position or, it was listed as an elected.
Yeah.
Thought that was interesting.
Okay. Can I have a vote, a roll call, please?
Mayor Big Leone?
I'm going to abstain.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
No.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Downs?
No.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Bowd?
No.
Counselor Kletchia?
Yes.
Okay. Next is...
We have to find out on that?
Sure. There are five yeses and three noes, and one up there.
Okay. Next is a reappointment of Loris Casey, Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one.
I'll move that.
Two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Who's that, Marie? Mike, you may.
No, Marie, get out of it.
All right, okay.
I jumped the gun.
That's very gentleman of you. Okay, motion made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Joe Yu, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Downs?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Bowd?
Yes.
Counselor Kletchia?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we'll move into unfinished business, discussion, discussion in action. Resolution regarding referral of North Branford Police Department facility to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Okay. Be it resolved in accordance with chapter seventy-three of the town North Branford Code of Ordinances, the town council refers the North Branford Police Department Building Project to the Permanent Project Building Committee, which shall be responsible in overseeing the construction of said project and shall keep the town manager's status reports of the project on a regular basis. The town manager shall keep the town council advised on these status reports. The committee may make recommendations to the town council in any phase of said project.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Diamond, Mike, was that you? Seconded by Counselor Duddy. Any further discussion on this? No? Any vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right, next is discussion in action, drainage pipe tie-in to Public Works from new police facility.
Yeah, this was just a, a carryover, and I, I think Fran had reported out. I just didn't, I wanted to keep that on there to, to see if there was a, if you wanted to address it within the budget, either capital improvement item or how, how you wanted to do it, or where you wanted to do it, where you wanted it to end up.
So the figure you gave us, Fran, the estimate, was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's a, that's an estimate, really. I mean, to like, the engineer, I haven't got the final stuff from him, but that's where, you know, that's the estimate that we got.
Do we have to decide on it tonight? Anthony, for, if it's CIP, you're right, we can, okay?
File against CIP down the road.
Okay. I think I would like to wait until we get a little bit more concrete numbers.
Yeah, they need more information.
Engineers, that is six, so.
Okay. As, as long as it's not holding anything up in the project and anything like that, then I would like to wait until we got more information. Yeah, it can just stay on there, I think, and we just keep it under unfinished.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be tabled? All right. Next is award a bid for RFP number one, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, solid waste and recycling service contract.
I'll make a motion that we award bid number RFP one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, solid waste and recycling service contract to John's Refuge, the lowest bidder.
I'll second that. Okay, motion. I can't look up quick enough. Motion made by Counselor Duddy, seconded by...
A whole bunch of people.
Yeah, a whole bunch of people. Joe?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Fawnin, Fawnin, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have some... Yeah, I just have some questions. I just want to make sure that we all understand. So I know Johns did an all-in bid, so it's my understanding, whatever the tonnage is that was used for the estimates, that if we're over, we don't get billed for being over. If we're under, we don't get a credit for being, for having less. And if tipping fees go out of whack or whatever else, it's not our concern. It's totally up to Johns, and you can't come back to us and say that we-
It's an all-in bid, yes.
For the five years. Except for years three, four, and five is, does not include, the price does not include bulky waste?
Right, we gave you year one and two, bulky waste included with disposal fees. Year three, four, and five to be negotiated or discussed at per point. We were hoping to get rid of bulk at one point, they said it would be less and less, so.
The past year, I think there was more, unfortunately.
It's out there this week, too, it looks quite extensive, this is the week for bulk, but-
Right.
Yes, we did all-in, and we take the risk, not you.
Okay.
Okay. Can I have a vote?
Is there any other comments to elaborate?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Come on.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce myself, Frank Antonacci, from All American Waste. We worked hard on this, and I think I'd like to speak to the matter of transparency that was brought up a couple times. All of our interactions with the town was in public forum. Our letters were made to the public, our bid was made public, until last week when Mike Paulus and Michelle Knack would ask to speak to us at the request of the council. So I just want to clarify that, as the number one thing here for us is our reputation. So just hope to clarify that for the council. Two other things, if we're looking for apples to apples, let's be clear. The only thing that Johns gave you was a two-year deal. Clearly, they said years three, four, and five are gonna be subject to negotiation, and clearly changes the scope of the services by taking bulky collection out of that. If you want to compare just those two years, we're $32,000 cheaper. So I think it's disingenuine to say that they are the lowest cost proposed. On top of that, there's been no disposal sites disclosed, something that I think you should all be concerned about with your responsibility to ensure that there's a responsible handling of your waste. Recycling contamination levels, which, Mr. Duddy, you spoke about your concern on how those are gonna be handled moving forward. There's nothing in any of these proposals that describes what their new facility, because you're no longer on a MIRA, will allow for recyclables and contamination levels. Not sure how you will budget for that. We were clear in our response on what our contamination levels are, and we're confident servicing towns like North Branford, you'll see zero. Just to elaborate why we think that our fixed fee proposal is more beneficial to the town than signing a lump sum, is very similar to why a couple of years ago, when you had a lump sum contract and things went awry with rates, I believe the contractor at that point came to the council to renegotiate the terms. We don't look to do that. Also, we provided you fixed fee rates for nine years, not five. I think that's an important thing to add to this discussion. And then also, what we're seeing right now in the COVID increase in municipal solid waste is an increase between 10% and 20% on all of our municipal contracts. You're seeing it as well. In the fiscal year that was provided, that was a kind of a bridge year on pre-COVID and COVID, your tons are tracking at about 4,400 tons. Prior to that, you're around 4,100 tons. When you return back to pre-COVID levels, which I would expect you would, it's a difference between 260 and 300 tons. The average tipping fee rate, $91 to $95 over the course of the first five years, you're looking at $23,000 to a $25,000 a year savings on top of what you're seeing. So I think that all in all, our proposal is the most transparent, most budgetable, and the best decision from the town. So I ask that you take that into consideration when you vote, and also the fact that this was a nine-year solid deal in one of the most, and I believe the guys from Johns said it last time they were here. All their disposal sites are seeing tremendous increases on their disposal fees. We gave you something for nine years that you could budget around and you can be secure with, that your waste and recycling will be handled economically and environmentally soundly. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I just have one question for you. You said for the first two years of the contract, when I look at your number versus Johns, but then I look at the notes, your fees do not include the tipping fees with the bulk, bulky waste, so that would increase your cost to us. And if I look at the prior history of bulky waste and just take a rate of $90 MSW tipping fee on the bulky waste, that would add to the cost of your contract, because it says here that it doesn't include the tipping fees for bulky waste in all five years of the contract that we see here. So am I missing something? So that would not put you cheaper based on the estimates that we have from Johns.
The bulky waste, bulky waste, I think, was taken on both in the comparison that was put together with the town.
It said that they, the costs include, but do, the pickup of bulky waste, but don't include the tipping fees. So someone has to pay the tipping fees, so I'm guessing we would get billed on the tipping fees.
Yeah, so ours was a million, was, even if you had that back in, we were cheaper in year one.
Well, what would the, is it the MSW tip rate per ton on the bulky waste?
No, it's $80, we provided that in the RFP.
Okay, so we don't have that information in this here, on here. But even on, if it's, I mean, the bulky waste looks like it's around 400 tons. So at 80, that's $32,000 for one year. So if we take it for year one and two, that's 64. And their, your total cost and add the 64 would be more than Johns.
And year two were less, our number of year two was actually less?
Yeah, I mean, I just roughly added them together, and if I have to add back the, on the tipping fees for bulky waste, then All American Waste would not be cheaper for year one and two.
And the only variable, just to clarify, is the bulk. The two years are included of, the five years is fixed for your tip, for your tonnage, for all the estimates. It's just the bulk that in year three is to be discussed at your convenience. Everything else is rock solid, it's just-
Okay.
And if you go back to the original RFP, it adds allocation for it.
How much is that?
I don't have the original RFP, as you can see, now they went to the second RFP. Remember, this is the five years she asked for. The first one was nine, and we did nine. We did both A and B of the nine years, all in included. But now it came back to this second version.
Call the question, the discussion's not even with the council anymore. I'll call the question.
So.
Okay, I had the motion in the second, I believe.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Can I have, we have a roll call vote, please, yes?
Sure. Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampino?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Downs?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Bowd?
Yes.
Councilor Kletchia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Memorial Day Parade. What do you have on that, Mike?
Yeah, just what was requested in terms of, I think, the concern about where we'd be in terms of vaccination rates. So 68% inclining among those 16 and older that are eligible. You know, when you take in the total population, we're, you know, 59%. So where we'll be, anybody's guess, but certainly I anticipate much higher. Maybe not much higher, but higher, I should say. So it's really a comfort level in the council. I think you know, and you've been watching the news, that the governor's opening up mid-May anyway, in terms of my understanding, in terms of opening up the state with activities. So it's permissible, it's whether the council is comfortable with having a gathering. He's still wearing face masks and distancing. So I really, you know, again, it's a comfort call. You know, the groups that are gonna come or not come, I don't know. We're, you know, we can pull it off, I guess, last minute. We can, we're gonna have a lot of planning involved yet into it, because it was up in the air. But if the council wants to go, we'll do our best to get a parade.
I would like to see things get back to normal as much as possible. Do we have anybody that will, if we're okay this, do we have anybody that will put it together? I don't know who does it.
Well, we have a committee. Every year we have a committee, we'll pull the committee together and, see, I mean, I did hear from the police department that they'll provide the support and, but they won't walk, they won't march in it.
They won't?
No. And I think that's just out of caution. Again, I don't know how that extrapolates to other organizations. I have not, we haven't taken any calls on the matter that I'm aware of from groups, except for, I'm sorry, except for one group that was interested and wanted to know, is this, is this on or not? I'm sorry, there was one group, and I forget, the name escapes me, but I can get that from Gina. She took a call from a group, interested to know whether we're going or not. What kind of group? Let's say like a-
Like a blue.
Oh, so like a-
March band.
March band, yeah. Okay.
So I was just asking, it was Girl Scouts or?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I've had people ask me, too. I don't know, I don't know who normally marches in these parades. I've never been involved with it before. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Well, I would be concerned about, you don't have children under 16 vaccinated, and there are gonna be a lot of children that would go to the parade. That would be my concern.
I think it's, I think it's probably getting too close to the date that they're gonna open everything back up again. And there's a lot of concerns. I have a lot of concerns, even though I'm vaccinated, I still have a lot of concerns.
I really have concerns, because-
You know, so I would-
There'll be a lot of kids there.
It'd be my recommendation to kick it back another year. I mean, we're not losing anything.
Sorry, Mike. There's so much information, disinformation out there. I've heard several times that outdoors with a mask on, or even with the wind, the breeze blowing, it's almost nearly impossible to get infected with COVID. We have to keep in mind it's an outdoor event, too. So has the health department, have they considered that, that it's an outdoor event? I mean, it's-
I think so, certainly they know this is an outdoor event, and they're still saying distancing and masks until further notice. And again, I'm concerned like Marie is and like Mike is in terms of the small, you know, children under 16, and the, you know, the gathering, the staging that we do, that we, you know, we come in close contact. I mean, certainly we can do the best we can to lengthen that, and, but I can't control crowds on the side of the street, those that march in, and we can obviously bullhorn and continue to reinforce spacing and distancing and masks, but-
So your recommendation would be to err on the side of caution?
I would. I would, like Mike and Marie, I would join that and say another year out is just out of abundance of caution, just because of that, for me, the younger population that's unvaccinated.
That makes sense, I never thought of that.
Well, and if the police aren't marching in it, I mean, that, I mean, they lead us off on it, and if they're concerned and not doing it, I think we need to take the lead from them.
That's where, that's where I, I was, I came, I know last week I expressed more hesitance. This week I came in thinking, after hearing about the governor lifting his restrictions and, hey baby, but hearing any uncomfort by municipal employees or police officers or fire, like, I want to respect that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I started out, two minutes ago, I was all for it, but now just thinking about it, which, I really would like to have it, but just out of caution, I mean, just, we skipped just this one here. It's not gonna hurt, I know everybody wants to get, get out and do their thing, and it probably, probably wouldn't be a problem, but for caution, it'd be easier just to back off.
Didn't they do something last year, though, to just like have a service at?
Yeah, right.
Right out front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have a gathering.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the police got hit hard with COVID, you know, and I could see their hesitation in participating again until we're 100% or close to 100% vaccinated, and our rates are dropping. You know, our rates are dropping, but still, they're not where they should be.
Yeah, I don't want to think about the kids, I don't want to take any chances.
That's so bothersome.
That was a very good point. We've gone this far. Changed my mind.
And you're racing against, you know, you're fighting against the variant as well. I mean, we're putting shots in arms as fast as we can, but, you know, the variant is spreading as well. That's the other factor, and, you know, abundance of caution, I think, is err on the side of caution.
So do you need a motion?
Do you want to make a?
Do you want us to vote on it, or you just?
Yeah, yeah, I think a motion to postpone until 2022 would be appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the Memorial Day Parade until 2022.
Second.
If the council's agreeable, I mean, we can still try in terms of a small, pull together a small ceremony if you think that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, we did it last year, and it was worse last year than it is now.
Right, we didn't have that.
I think there has to be some recognition, so whatever was pulled together last year, if that can happen again, that would be great.
Besides, it may rain, who wants to walk in the rain? I've done that. Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions?
I oppose.
Three votes. Okay. All right, next is new business discussion in action, review of park signs is A, it's the first one.
Right, so I put together a packet in terms of trying to get to the next phase, and although we have in here, you have the rationale and explanation in terms of the history for both Switek Park and also for the Auger property. And interesting, I even have the designs there, but as I dug into this and I got help, I want to thank both Anthony, Kurt, and Fran in terms of the history of digging this information out. I think we're gonna need a little bit more work on the Auger side in terms of figuring out the full design. And I think maybe tonight, I would ask that, I think we're okay if you, if the council agrees with the design. Again, the designs of the, the signs are uniform. So when you see the Switek Park, I think that's pretty straightforward, and I think we can, we can implement that one. And the reason I pause on the Auger is that in further consultation with staff, it appears that the agreement, apparently, was for Auger Valley on the backside off, a sign off of Totucket Road versus, so I think what we have to have maybe is two signs. So Auger Valley, and then maybe an Auger Farm sign off of Forest Road, but I'm just throwing that out there. I think it's, I think we've gotta do a little bit more work and pull off the dog park as probably a separate, smaller sign designated closer to the park, so we separate them. As you can see in the design, I had them just tag it as a sort of second piece, but in feedback that I've gotten, we should probably separate them.
That was my objection, Dr. Zario's name should not be on the park itself. It should be an add-on to it.
Okay, or I, would you object to separate?
It certainly takes away from the, you know, the gracious sale to the town.
If it was like, like here it says 298 Forest Road, so if it was a hanging sign down below, and then the 298, you just didn't want it on the big sign, okay, okay. Okay, okay.
Mike, what's the, the first part of this page, was it future on the wall field or
Well, because at the time...
At the time, they, they got it.
They just got it, yeah, and so Wall Field's already established.
Yeah, okay, just trying to make that...
Yeah, so maybe you can, if you're agreeable, the motion to approve Switek and move forward with that, and then I'll redo the design and, or if you're clear on that, we can do both. But I thought maybe the Auger, if you want, I think there's enough funds in the, in the account to do, to address the wishes and how it was written, two signs, one on the backside, one on the front side, so Totucket and Forest Road, for the Auger property.
Is there any possibility, when you redo the Auger sign, if you're going to change the appearance of the sign? What I'd hate to do is approve the Switek sign, install it, and then decide you're gonna use a different design.
No.
Right across the road.
No, no, same, same design, the same design, color scheme, design is going to carry through on all of them.
So all the park signs are the same? This is the same design as...
Yeah, I understand that, I just want to be sure.
Yep.
I could make that motion that the, we approve the Auger Farm sign and Auger Valley sign as designed and with a small attachment for Dr. Azario underneath. Not part of the same sign.
Get underneath.
And the Switek, you want to put Switek, you do want...
And the Switek, what is Switek family?
Switek Park.
Switek Park.
Okay, and then, just to clarify, it'll be, it'll be Auger Valley on Totucket and Auger Farm on Forest Road?
Yes.
Great, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Duddy, second by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion on it? Can I have a vote, Jesse?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right, next is Inland Wetland outside consultant.
Yeah, sorry, what we're talking about there is Inland Wetland's request for legal, outside legal counsel, and Eric, and the town attorney can speak to that, that issue.
So with respect to this, very simply, my firm has a conflict with respect to a matter that's pending before the Inland Wetland Commission. So since we have a legal conflict, we cannot represent the town. It's a, there's a member of an LLC that was a former client of the firm. So we're asking for permission to regain outside counsel to represent the commission.
At the same rate?
At the same, we would find someone to do it at the same rate.
I'll make a motion to approve that. We hire an outside counsel to represent us on the Inland Wetland's complaint.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Deputy Mayor O'Zampino. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay. Next is a resolution regarding referral of Stanley T. Williams Roof Project to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
So does this have to go now to them? I mean, like, what's, do we have to refer it before we can start the project? Or can we make sure that we have everything in order as far as, you know, the Board of Ed approving the project, coming to the council, you know, all of that stuff?
We didn't even get a bit on this yet, did we?
Well, we haven't, because we have to see once, in order to get state reimbursement, we have to make sure we follow all of the things, and I think Rusty told us that we needed an architect. That's one of the requirements of, for the state, so...
Yeah, you can hold off.
Is this a little soon to refer it to Permanent Project? I think they have enough on their plate right now, and we're not doing anything right now. We just need more clarification.
Sure.
As to where that is.
Absolutely, that can wait.
So I'd like to table referring STW Roof Project to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Second.
Can you keep it on unfinished business, so it's, we don't forget about it?
Sure.
I'll second that, bud.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Motion was made by Councilor Angel Longley, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Any more, any further discussion on this? Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right, next is a review and approval of bid specifications for RFQ/P number four 2020, 2021, for part-time clerk of the works, construction oversight services for the New North Frankfurt Police Department.
Subwoofer.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one thing on here, and I know this is probably kind of standard, but under option, under B, under insurance, I mean, if we're looking for a part-time clerk, and I know it's been discussed a number of times here and also at Permanent Project, about, you know, having like someone who's retired, it might be a retired building official or someone, and it's a part-time position, these insurance rates or requirements would preclude having an individual, because they probably do not carry these limits on insurance. And I don't, I mean, looking at this, we would only probably get companies bidding on this, and I'm not sure that that is exactly what we were looking, and I know that this was also an issue that was brought up at Permanent Project Building Committee on here, is that, is there any way around this?
You can, you can. It's a business decision of the council. It comes as a recommendation from the underwriter, and you're right, Rose, it was discussed, and we did talk about the levels, and again, we pushed back on the insurance company, and it's not locked in. It's their recommendation in terms of reducing our exposure. It's a business decision, if you want to lower that, as a group, the council wants to lower that, they can.
I just, I mean, I don't think we would, we would get a person, because they aren't going to carry this kind of limits on here.
No, I'm in agreement with that.
Right?
Yeah, there's no way.
Because we're putting them on the books, right?
Well, they're, they're...
Yeah, it's gonna be a part-time position. But nobody, nobody holds, nobody holds those funds.
I just don't know what, you know, like what kind of limits, and I, what was discussed at Permanent Project Building, but these just seem high for an individual. I don't know that anyone would, these are all company rates, limits.
Do you want to tail it or change that?
I'm a little confused, because we're talking about a part-time employee, but it says contractor vendor in here. So what are we doing?
I think it's, I think it's, you know, for the term of the project.
Right, but either we're gonna have them as a part-time employee, or we're gonna issue them a 1099 or, or...
Right, but even if, say, even if it's a 1099, it would put these requirements, they're not gonna have.
No, I, no, I understand.
We're looking for an hour, right?
I understand that part, but I'm like, are we gonna do a contractor, or are we gonna do a part-time employee? This is, the two seem to gray. Is there a way the person could be part-time and also fall under the town's insurance? Well, the thing is, if you have a part-time employee...
But they're not making any decisions. They're just, you know, like if there's anything wrong, they're going to the contractor. They're letting us know, they're not, they're not stopping the project, that's not their role.
They can't do any of that.
Right, so...
At the risk of going back to our conversations about clerk of the works, is part of the goal of having this individual kind of assume that liability and oversight, taking that off of it, is that part of it, or I don't know, it may or may not be?
No, it's gonna be, it's basically gonna be an employee of the town looking after our building and making sure it's done right.
So it's an employee of the town or a contractor?
The way it's written and the way it should be, it should be an employee, part-time employee of the town that's representing the town.
Exactly, that's my...
Yeah.
So we shouldn't be doing an RFP if we're gonna be an employee then? You don't do RFPs for employees?
No.
Well, is that what we did for the high school, or did we do it as a RFP?
Yeah.
Well, we, we didn't do a clerk of the works yet for the high school.
Is there a way we could make that person part-time and they would have town insurance? In other words, we could supply it, as if they're just a regular full-time employee for that period?
Vin, Vin, you're kind of quiet in the back there.
Well, this isn't health insurance, this is liability.
Right.
I mean, but everybody that works for the town is kind of covered. Yeah, but what other employees in town are we requiring?
This is for short-term projects, so...
No, I'm not, I understand, I just meant that if there, if you're an employee of the town, don't you automatically...
So we don't need to...
Have liability covered, you know?
Yeah, you do. The only thing part-time is they don't have any health insurance or benefits other than that, but I'm, they're covered under... Right. Employee insurance, part-time employee insurance, same as we have a part-time building inspector, or we have part-time people in the town's office or...
But like, if I remember correctly, this was, this job was, the length of this job was the completion.
Correct.
Once it's complete, it's...
Probably a year and a half or whatever, and then it's done.
Right.
Yeah, it just wasn't, it's not, it wasn't written that the goal was to get a firm or individual professional, not as an employee.
Well, we'd never be able to get an individual with these insurance requirements. You'll get firms bidding on it.
I guess, I don't know, do I care that it's an individual or a firm? I mean, I care about the price and the value, I care about them doing a good job. I don't know if I care.
It's a good point, I mean, we could put it out the bid, and I mean, right?
We don't have to take it.
What's that?
Yeah, we don't have to take it if we don't like what...
The number comes in and out of line, or something we can't afford, or don't think we can afford?
You're just automatically gonna exclude a certain category, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna bid on it. You're just gonna get companies to bid on it, because what individual carries those kinds of insurance rates and pays premiums on that?
Right, well, we're talking two different things. I mean, I think, I think what I just heard was, do we, you know, whether it's an individual or a company, is it at a certain rate, at a certain quality of work, then it doesn't matter?
Well, if we put...
If we truly want a part-time employee, then we don't want this. This isn't what we want.
If we put it out, if we put it out as an employee with a list of qualifications, we may get two or three, four or five retired building inspectors that certainly could come in here and do a great job for us.
Right, and that's fine, then we don't want this.
Right.
So that's what we want, right?
Yeah.
Tara's saying is we just, we don't need an RFP.
We just have to write the qualifications that we want.
The job description.
Yes, the job description.
But then, the other question, I guess, to that is then, so are we hiring a permanent or the temporary employee that we're hiring, that we're going to say, okay, we're hiring you on a, do we ever do that?
Yeah.
That was my understanding, the length of the project.
Right.
I mean, that was my understanding.
And that's like, as Rose said, it's probably about a year and a half, that's it.
That's why you're in the retirement group, somebody looking for some extra cash.
Short-term?
Like when Franny retires. Maybe Kurt.
Are we withdrawing? Or just put out a job description?
I think we should just refer back to the town manager, and I'll come back with, you know, the job description at next meeting.
Hey, Vin, what's, what's done in other towns? Are they hired as employees, or are they hired as contractors?
They're not hired as employees. They're hired as third-party vendors, so they'd be the 1099s, and they would supply their own insurance.
Right.
You don't want to take on...
If we put out a job listing, and we ask them to carry certain liability insurance, I mean, is that...
Yes.
That, that's been done too?
Yeah, it's just, it's hiring a third-party vendor. This is a, this is a position that's finite, so you wouldn't want to take on this position as an, as an employee, in my opinion.
Yeah, but those insurance rates, so...
That's, that's the issue, that'll be the issue of the, of the applicants.
Right.
They have to cover their, their insurance, as any, anyone...
The insurance rate quoted, the insurance rates quoted there will be for firms only.
You're talking about the insurance in schedule, in...
Yeah, on page four.
Yeah, those are, those are standard in what we put in for all vendors. You know, the only, the only thing I questioned when I was talking to the town manager is the umbrella, is that a million? And sometimes, depending on the project, you put it at five million. But everything else in there is standard.
We had Jack Crasco as clerk of the works for the auditorium.
No, he wasn't clerk of the works.
The intermediate school.
That was, that was...
Walter Link.
Was the clerk of the works.
Oh, Walter Link. He was a private, yeah, he was an employee of the town.
You could, you could use an employee of the town.
It's been done before.
Yeah, you can, you know, some towns will use their town engineer, or some...
Well, this was an employee that we hired on a temporary basis.
You hire them, get, have them ready to do the job.
It's been done here previously. So it wasn't, wasn't a firm.
If you want to proceed in that way, then you would be putting, you wouldn't be doing an RFP, you'd be making a hire, you'd be putting out a job, job description.
So Vin, just to ask you one more time, I think you've already said it, what do you recommend?
What do I recommend? Well, there are pros and cons to both, right? One, and, you know, it is correct, some towns have used employees like town engineers to serve as clerk of the works, and other towns have used third parties. It really depends on the scope of the project and what your comfort level is. You know, I, I tend not to think in terms of adding headcount, because with employees, there becomes, there's other risks, you know, where, you know, you, you would carry the workers' comp if there's an injury, if there's, you have, it's on your insurance, so by outsourcing that, you're limiting your risk. So, you know, that's, that's really the issue, is what's, what's the risk exposure to the town, and what's your tolerance for it? If it's been done by way of an employee, I mean, you're gonna be hiring someone for a finite period of time, as long as the project goes on. You can do it that way. I doubt, in this position, it's a part-time clerk of the works, it's a terribly risky position, you know, where you have to worry about much, you know, liability, in my view. But, you know, again, it's really, do you want to add to headcount or not? You know, because when you add to, even on a part-time basis, how many hours a week are they working? Are you gonna be obligated to provide health insurance, things of that nature, things that could trigger once they're employed? That's not what you, that's not a concern as an independent contractor. Thank you.
I suppose if it's an independent contractor, you know, they're required to provide a service, and it may be 10 hours today, eight hours today, not, not four hours today, because I got, you know, I'm only part-time, I've got to leave now. You know, I mean...
I guess what's our goal?
To have somebody that can observe and protect the town.
Yeah. If that's the goal, I recommend having a fully insured, like have, having the insurance, the industry standard insurance coverage, and a firm that will be accountable, liable for whatever, as opposed to pushing the liability on to us. If that's the goal, hiring a clerk of the works.
Do we put this out and see where we go?
I mean, we can, we don't have to award it, but.
See what we get, right?
We could try it, put it out and see what happens.
Not to believe, or, we also talked about the engineer.
So I, I was just conferring with, with Vin about just, you know, the, the product here in front of you as a, looking at a, a firm or individual and throwing it out there, testing the water, see what comes back. And then against, my kind of question to Vin was whether the council has the ability to, to waive it. Let's just say Rose is correct and there are three other individuals that say, uh, I'm gonna respond, I don't have a two million dollar, a million dollar level, but here's my insurance, that you can evaluate that and, and see from a business decision if that's what, what you wanna do. Um, that's one, just another option to con- to consider, if you wanna go that.
Do we have a preferred, like, have that be something that they offer or, you know, as part of their, their, versus?
Yeah, I would think, if you, if time is not of the essence, and you wanna table this for two weeks, we could evaluate if you wanted to go the route of, as an employee, what the ex, what the cost to the town would be, if any, right? We could do that analysis for you and come back to you in two weeks and then at least you'll have that information. If you add this, if you make this an employee, you have, these are your risks or exposures. And if you don't, you know, so that's up to you though. You can put it out and see what responses you get and take it from there. You're not obligated to award the RFP, uh, you reserve the right not to, so, depends on what direction you wanna go.
Well, can we do both? Put it out and also do that analysis in the meantime?
We can do, we can absolutely do both. I think we should put it out, and it can't hurt.
Yeah. I think the, the motion was made in second, right? This is all just, this was part of discussion, so.
Okay, we need, we need a vote?
Yeah.
Uh, just, we have a vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Okay, next is, uh, review and approval of bid specifications for bid number nine, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, for general contractor for the new North Branford Police Department.
Some move.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano, uh, any discussion? We have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension?
Okay. Next is, uh, OPEB calculations.
OPEB, OPEB.
Oh, here he comes.
OPEB, we love OPEB. OPEB says for other post-employment benefits, what that means basically is, in our case, it's police officers are our major driver. Our police officers, we tell them, okay, work for us for twenty-five years, when you leave, we'll cover your medical insurance until you're age sixty-five. So if you have theoretically, an officer starts maybe at twenty, does his twenty-five years, forty-five, so from age forty-five to sixty-five, we're promised to pay for his medical insurance. And that's what other post-employment benefits are. Every two years, we have evaluation done by Milliman, our actuaries, and what they've come up with is some suggestions, it's time to change some of the actuarial assumptions, similar to what we have when we do our pension evaluation. That's done annually, the old PEB is done every two years. Uh, what they're suggesting, a couple things, is the mortality table. Uh, remember from our pension calculation, our pension talks a couple of years ago, a new mortality table was created, PUB twenty twenty, which tracks the lifespan of municipal employees as compared to the regular Joe. I'm not sure why there's a difference, but there's a difference. So they're recommending we adopt that PUB twenty twenty mortality table, that's, that's one change. Secondly, a similar conversation we have in the pension committee is we have an assumed rate of return, uh, like seven percent in this plan. And based on the assets, the way they're invested in the market today, a more realistic rate is about six point three. So what she's saying in column seven on these charts, that I, I labeled them because it was just too confusing otherwise, if we go and bring the actuarial assumption to six point two five, as Councilor Angeloni mentioned before, that still leaves us at an eighty-three point four funded ratio, which, yeah, she also mentioned is miles ahead of many towns in Connecticut. Miles ahead, I believe me when I tell you. Our, our OPEB, we funded it from the very beginning, we were the first ones to put our OPEB trust in place, we funded annually what the actuary tells us, and it, it's, it's running well. So the recommendation is to, to listen to the actuary, which you guys have always done since day one, and to adopt the PUB twenty twenty mortality table and to change the interest rate assumption to six point two five, based on the calculation by Milliman.
Do you understand?
Yes.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
I understand in a pension.
Yep.
Mortality is an issue, because you paid that until, you just said we're paying these benefits age sixty-five.
Right, well, it is, they, they could die by sixty-five, and in the case of the Board of Ed, theirs are life. They, they pay superintendents till they die.
Okay.
So ours, all the town plans end at sixty-five, you're a hundred percent right. The Board of Ed plans, they've made the guarantee to cover the superintendents till they die, and even business managers, when they leave, get it till they die. So there is a mortality piece in that.
Anthony, just to clarify, at sixty-five, all benefits stop, or do they become seconds?
Yeah, they're, it's, it's actually mandatory eligibility is, is the term, is in the contract.
Right.
Once you're eligible, town plan ceases.
Okay, so it's not secondary at that point, okay.
We do offer the ability for retirees, if they want to, to jump onto an Anum Blue Script plan, but solely paid by them. It comes out of their pension, if they wanna do that.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council votes to adopt the PUB twenty twenty mortality table and lower the interest rate assumption to six point two five percent per Anum, based on the calculations from Milliman.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fornin, any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
All right, next is, uh, disposition of balance in health insurance reserve.
Again, as Councilor Angeloni alluded to earlier, we have, about five years ago, we went into a self-insurance form of medical insurance. We didn't, uh, last that long in it, ended up being not a, not a good move towards the end. There's about seventy-four thousand dollars worth of money in that pot still, and the suggestion that was made to finance, and they, they concur, is we use that money for this year's OPEB contribution from the town, that allows us to take that fifty thousand that was in the budget, out of the budget, and we're using the seventy-four, so we're still twenty-four theoretically ahead of the game, again, further bolstering that eighty-three point four percent. So the recommendation is to use the balance in the health insurance reserve, seventy-four, two sixty-six, fifty, as our OPEB contribution and close that fund out, put it to bid.
I'd like, second.
Can we make the motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, uh, motion was made by Councilor Fornin, seconded by Councilor Angeloni, any discussion, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right, next we have town-wide facility maintenance reserve.
Yep, you had asked for an accounting of the facility maintenance, and again, there were the items that were, that came out of there, the, uh, three items per the lease for the fire department, uh, the one that has been reversed is the tri-state generator mechanics that is put back to the various departments. And the, the key to this thing is the bottom, the motion that you wanted all expenditures out of that pot to be approved and run through the Public Works Director.
I make a motion that the North Branford Town Council instructs all department heads that effective immediately, all expenditures out of the town-wide facility maintenance reserve should be, shall be coordinated through the Public Works Director.
Second.
Just a question on that is, um, repairs, like at the firehouses, I saw there was a thirty-two hundred dollar repair. Are they getting quotes or are they just repairing it and sending us a bill? And if it goes to Franny, is Franny gonna make sure we get quotes over a thousand dollars?
They will follow the purchasing guidelines.
Which is what?
Which is quotes up to seventy-five hundred and then bid seventy-five hundred plus.
So you could, you could send a thirty-two hundred dollar bill to the town every time and not get another quote?
No, you gotta, you gotta.
You gotta get a quote. Did they get a quote this time? I couldn't tell you, to be honest with you.
Well, I don't wanna see something come in without a quote in the future.
There was a policy a couple meetings ago, uh, Councilor Plecha, I was at one of the, uh, Fire Commission meetings about purchasing, and we referenced in that policy we created, that all purchases will be compliance with the town, I think it's chapter eight or the town purchasing code, so. Uh, your point is valid, and I don't know, I can't give you an answer on that one right now, I could find out for you, I, I highly doubt it, to be a hundred percent honest with you.
I know, I, I, that's why I brought it up.
Yep.
I know there was.
Well, Anthony, all that, all that has to come through the, uh, Fire Commission, correct? The way that that, the way that that read?
Rose, can we make a stipulation?
Not really, it's between the fire companies and the manager. Okay, so they submit them to the manager.
For the fire.
Fire commission is not involved in the lease at all.
But the, just the fire department?
No, no, any, any purchase over certain, has to be approved.
But Franny's controlling everything else.
Limited to the overhead doors, the roof going up and down, things like that.
So Franny's, yeah.
He's, he's, he's doing everything else.
Nobody could come in and say, we need this repaired.
Right, because Franny's in charge of it.
Repair it without going to Fran. If they repair it first and then go to Fran, it doesn't get paid.
For all the department heads, they have to submit their requests for any repairs to Franny, and Franny's gonna be in charge of prioritizing them and, and getting it done in the most effective way, whether it's with our guys or if he has to go out or whatever. But on the fire department, I believe there's something in their lease.
Right, as Captain Tino just reminded me, it basically covers their door openers, which is, if the doors blow up, if the fire trucks go out to a call and the doors can't go up, obviously that's, that's a concern. So that's what's covered, that's what's mentioned in the lease, is that it maintains the door openers.
It's just the, it's just the door openers.
And in the case of the company too, and then you see on there, that was their front walk, their man door. What happened was the contractor that we had hired to do work on the door had poor workmanship and the door was not secured and the wind blew it open and damaged it, so that's why we had to replace that door, it was our, our contractor that didn't do a good job. But in, in the lease, it's just, just the door, overhead door controllers is what's covered.
So just the vehicle doors, not the walk-through doors?
Correct, correct, because they, they would have the door openers.
Or if it applies to the plektron system, which, at each firehouse has a different door assigned to a plektron system, so dispatcher, toner, door opener, that's out of our control, the work we should have paid to repair that road.
Right, that's, that's usually, that's covered by the town, usually.
We trust you, Franny.
Someone else will do it, Franny. Okay, can I, can I get a motion, and I don't remember where we were.
Yeah.
Can you get a second?
I'll second it.
So I made the motion and, uh, Mike.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension?
A little away, Anthony.
Yep, nah, I got a couple more.
Appropriation transfers.
Appropriation transfers, the ones, the bottom ones, the two bigger ones are just based on the budget. Again, we budget the ambulance money, probably about tonight, in the ambulance department, but it actually functions as an operating transfer or transferring it to operating transfer department to kick it out to the ambulance fund. Uh, the very top one on the page, Recreation Director and I, and Public Works have worked on acquiring a new, uh, van, a used van through the state system, uh, about seventy-one, hundred dollars and change, uh, just to roll a sense mechanic here, check it up, and it, uh, there was about four or five that came in that day, this was the best of the fleet, has new tires and, uh, recommend that we purchase it. The other ones, the libraries, some smaller ones, again, as it relates to her COVID activities, the take-home kits, things like that, the crafts. Uh, the phone on the bottom there, initially, if you recall, last year when we changed to the voice-over IP system, we thought we were gonna get one bill town-wide, they were able to split, to move all the money to central services last year, current year budget. Well, come to find out that the bills are actually broken up by location, so we're now kicking that money back. We've been charging it to fire and public works and recreation and, and library, now we're making the budget meet up with it, so that'll, that'll be, be cool for next year. Then the other one's a small paper shredder for Louisa and, um, some dues for our new town planner.
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, monthly finance report.
Yeah, we have to.
Oh, we gotta vote on it, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
All right, next we have, uh, monthly financial reports as of February twenty-eighth to two thousand twenty-one.
Financial, again, looking at the, the ones we typically point out, the top line, the property tax collections. If you recall, the last couple of months, we were a little bit lacking, do some timing of the, uh, high school students that come in and stuff our delinquents and demands. That's catching up, ninety-eight point five compared to ninety-eight point eight last year. Overall revenue, we're a little bit ahead, ninety point four compared to eighty-nine point eight last year. On the expenditure side of the house, uh, again, the bigger departments that are over-expended, technology, again, a lot of those are one-time costs this year as we try to do more, uh, ways to do a little disaster planning. You know, if this building were to not be here tomorrow, what would we do? We're working with the schools, taking over one of the classrooms at the school, or, or even the ambulance building, if it's a, a Northford, North Branford issue. So a lot of those are one-time costs. The animal control, I mentioned last month, the amount for the prior year was more than the, the outstanding purchase order, so the difference had spilled into this year. Again, bottom line, seventy-three point nine percent this year is a little bit ahead of seventy-four point two percent last year. So our revenues are a little bit pacing better than last year and our expenditures are pacing less than last year, so, another good report. Um, the other page that was in there is the, uh, other version of this report. Uh, again, it's a very time-consuming report that ties a lot of, uh, a needless time to, to, to do. And the numbers, I'm not really sure if they have any kind of value to us. There, there's still some significant differences, again, far, far greater than the five percent they have as, as parameters in there. And that's just because we don't spend things in a linear fashion. Any questions about the report? Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do, so we have, just wanna make sure, so we have the, the first report.
Which one was that one? Yep, the Ron, the Ron report?
It's got a name.
One of, one of the key things with the Ron report was commentary, and I've never seen commentary on it.
Because it'd been so much, so much greater than five percent, everybody would have to make commentary, we'd be commenting from everybody. You got, you got twenty percent mayor council, why, why are you under twenty percent? Well, because you haven't spent all the money for your, your dues and, you know, a hundred percent on WPTCA, two hundred and eighty-seven percent on the town manager. You know, the, the numbers are just, are just, mean nothing. Okay, the, the other report, the same information that you have in front of you there, you have in, in the same buy account, and this account doesn't have anything to do with revenue, report I give you tracks revenue as well in the detail, buy item, whether it's building permits, whether it's, uh, police service, whatever you wanna track, all the detail is there for it.
Now, hopefully our new system will give us some better numbers when we get it.
I, I think we have some good number yet.
Yeah, we got some good numbers yet.
So I just wonder, uh, is that, do we need all, do we need all of this time on here, does that make sense for us? Are we using it?
We're not using it, and quite honestly, it takes a lot of a needless time to create that report, because everything that she gets off this report, she has to put into the, there's, there's a tab for every department on that budget that she has to enter everything manually into that flows up to this master page.
You can't just.
No, you can't just import it in.
Flow it over.
All manually input, versus this other report is, is all, here's the information right here, line by line, account by account.
No, no, but I, but we're always looking at this one, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if it doesn't add value, then, then that's fine, I don't care.
But, but the, the detailed one after the normal, that just gets run off of your current system, correct?
Yeah, push a button, boom, there's, there's the papers.
Yeah.
And that's showing us all the revenue?
Every revenue item, you know, the, the, the Excel sheet that I, I read off of is the summary, but it's obviously. but it's other, it's back sheets where it says, you know, current year levy, prior year levy, supplemental motor vehicles, delinquent interest, every single revenue account we have is given to you what the budget is, what the actual is, you know, permits, how many, for instance, leases, you know, recordings, filing fees, every single revenue you want to know about in life is right there.
Anthony, how, the new financial, uh, system we're looking at, financial software system, that should have more improved reports, right?
It's gonna give you a report still.
Cause I mean, the, these reports I've been seeing for 30-something years.
And they worked for 30 years.
Huh?
They worked for 30 years.
Maybe a year.
They were, it's, it's, it's good information. I, I, they will print reports out, but it'll be the same kind of report that you see as, as the back of your identical-
Hopefully more detailed.
Same kind of detail, count by account.
Are you asking like maybe does it go for analytics?
Graphs and charts.
Yeah, that's it, that's what we need.
I think we gotta be careful, because, um, we are in financially good shape this town, and we just can't forget that.
Yeah.
And that, that doesn't happen by accident.
No, no. And the one thing I, I wanted to mention to you is, I should, the, the second line from the top, um, you'll notice, the one thing that's a deviation year over year is our delinquent revenues. Last year, we had about 92% of the money collected at this point, delinquent, this year it's 76. And that's a function, if you recall, last year with COVID, the council made a conscious decision to say, "Let's pause, let's not send people to the marshal or the collection agency, we're in COVID times, things are kinda crazy, let's take a break." So now, in April, we'll be sending two years' worth of delinquent folks to the marshal and collection agency and stuff. So that number, while it's low comparatively year over year, should increase over the next 60 days, as those delinquent taxpayers get sent out to the marshal and, and the town attorney and all that fun stuff. Any other questions on the report?
Nope.
That's not me.
Bill set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, next is approval of tax refund.
Some moved.
Second.
It's okay.
Thanks, Anne.
Just pick someone.
Give money back.
Okay. Let's, let's go over this night. Uh, motion was made by Councilman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Angeloni. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions?
All right, next is, uh, finalization of budget.
So if you recall, we were about .55 when we walked in the door today, up. And based on your actions, we are .44 lower than last year. So we made a .99 delta in the budget tonight, about $1.3 million was your effect of tonight's cuts and increased revenue. So, the bottom line is your mill rate next year will be 33.14, which is a decrease of .44 over the current year. What was the dollar? Total action tonight was $1,296,414. Between the increased revenue of the fund balance and the various expense cuts, and some additions you made as well, the net was 1,296,414. Resulting in the bottom line change, now going from a .55 positive increase beginning of the night to a negative 44 at the end of the night. So you have a couple of motions that you need to adopt. Uh, the first one is a two-pager, it has on the backside, it has the summary numbers from this page one. And then the second one is the actual budget question that you will send to the referendum, um, in man. Assuming in man, we've got them forward to change there, right?
May I?
Man, yeah. So the first one is the motion, again, the, uh, the numbers are on the backside of that page, identical numbers, what you see on page one of the budget book in front of you. Various levels, 17, 596, 197, 32, 435, 714 for the board there, $1,00133 for capital, 3705, 619 for the debt service. Total, it's total revenue, or total expenditure, I should say, is 55020, 430. The revenue, 3459, 502. Education grants, 7331, 325. Fund balance applied, $800,000. The capital's not showing in both, it, it washes in and out. Um, I can correct that. You want to manually put in that $150,000, it's, it's a plus and a minus. So, $150,000 on both the fund balance for capital and the capital appropriation on the bottom of the page. It won't change the bottom line numbers. Um, they will change the bottom line numbers, thank God. Okay, I plugged the number in. Never mind. The, the bottom line numbers you have there are right, the 55020, 430. I plugged, I put that number in, and it, I shouldn't have taken that account the other time, so. You want to write, manually write in $150,000 for fund balance for capital and capital appropriation, but it doesn't change the bottom line number I plugged in, it's not a formula number. So the bottom line is 55020, 430.
I move the motion, be hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council hereby adopts the proposed operating budget for the 21-22 fiscal year, as amended and recommended the same that the Treasurer-Finance Director, uh, to the budget referendum at the attached appropriation levels, and be hereby further resolved that the Treasurer-Finance Director is authorized to make any mathematical adjustments that may be required to the balance of the budget.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman Duddy, seconded by Councilman Angeloni. Any further discussion on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
And the second one is the referendum question.
In accordance with Section C8-5 of the Charter of the Town of North Bramford, the Town Council hereby approves the following advisory referendum question for the fiscal year 21-22 budget. Shall the Town Council recommended budget of $55,020,430, which will require a mill rate of 33.14 mills, be adopted?
Second.
Okay. Normally, um, indicated to reject it because it's too high, or reject it because it's too low, or it's approved? Is it normally a three-pronged question?
Right, that's, that's the question that goes on the, on the ballot, you're right, Joe, there's three. The voters have a choice of three different things. A, we like it, or B, know it's too high, or know it's too low.
We just have to approve the question, right?
Okay, Rose, you made the, the motion?
And Mike seconded.
Mike, you seconded?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Do we have a vote, Jess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions?
Okay, Rose. You're next.
Citizen statements.
Now the tower.
Oh, yeah, tower.
Okay, so, the telecommunications tower, um, I believe the town attorney has some information.
Yes, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, so New England Radio Consultants was hired by the town to analyze the town's safety dispatch radio system and make recommendations on the town-wide radio upgrade project. The, uh, the expert, Paul Zito, submitted a report to the town and proposed three scenarios, all of which, according to Mr. Zito, rely on the construction and location of a monopole telecommunications tower in the center of town, uh, in this, in the center of Norfolk. Uh, one of the areas, as you might recall, you've already considered and, uh, you rejected at that time. Uh, I received an email from Mr. Zito on, uh, March 31st, where he recommends that we float a balloon at the height of 160 feet, so that there can be a visibility, uh, seen from all interested parties, so that you can use that information to determine whether or not you should reconsider the location at 1332 Middletown Avenue. There's an alternate site that is being looked at, that's 1350 Middletown Avenue. I believe it's generally referred to as the ambulance location. So, those are the two sites. We're not doing the visibility balloon at 1350 Middletown, because, uh, according to the visibility study that was, uh, the visibility, uh, computerized program that was done, if you locate it at 1350 Middletown Avenue, it will definitely be visible, uh, more visible, uh, to multiple parties. And I, I have the computerized, uh, generated, uh, visualizations that I'll leave for you all, so that when the balloon is floated, assuming you approve, uh, the floating of the balloon, you can assess, based upon what the computer generated, whether or not the balloon test, uh, conforms to it. The purpose of this is not to approve anything other than the floating of a balloon. So, uh, the proposal would be to float a balloon on Monday. I discussed earlier today with a, uh, a vendor who would be, uh, getting the balloon floated. The winds this week apparently are too great to float a balloon, so it would not be a, a good, uh, week to do it, so they recommend, uh, Monday that it be done. I believe it would be floated for about four hours, and once I know the time window, I can circulate that. But, so the only, only authority we're looking for tonight is for permission to float a balloon on Monday. At the location, uh, 1322 Middletown Avenue.
I saw we did a balloon test once before.
That was at 130 feet. This is 160 feet.
The other thing too, Joe, I think, is they're trying to do it quickly, because there's no leaves on the trees, they want, and I guess the last time they did it, there was leaves on the trees, so it's the increased height plus the fact that there's no leaves on the trees, just to see what that looks like.
Well, first of all, I think the balloon is ridiculous, it's the proximity that's important. I don't think it has anything to do with the height, it's the proximity, and that's unfortunate.
Secondly, I thought anything significant like this would not be added to an agenda. I thought we had this discussion numerous times before, that nothing this serious would be added to an agenda, right away, and for us to vote on it, without any freaking information. I didn't get any maps, I didn't get any information, I didn't get nothing. And then they expect me to vote on it like this? And last time we had this discussion, we turned this down, because of radiation that could affect families in the area and children in the school system. Why the hell are we going back at this again? My answer is no.
Because Mr. Zito's, uh-
I don't care what Zito said.
It's your right to vote no.
We have a tower at Oshinkowski's that we've been working on off of 30 years.
Yes.
Or 40 years, I should say.
That's correct.
And, and, and we're looking for another location. No, I can't, I can't vote for that. It's just against my grain.
Vin, what would be the benefits of going, why we're going, and what are, what are the benefits of that? Well, again, this is only to float a balloon, to deter, so that there's, it could be a visibility study done. It's not to locate anything. I mean, according to Mr. Zito, the location of a tower at 1322 Middletown Avenue will benefit the town in a number of ways, uh, because, first of all, there's a need in that area of Norfolk for, uh, coverage. So it will address the lack of coverage in that area. And, uh, one of the scenarios puts a second tower over where I believe the general called the ice skating rink. Uh, this tower would provide coverage for the Norfolk center area as well as that. So you would, you would reduce the, going from two towers to one tower. But again, I, I want to emphasize, we're not at that sta, we're not at that stage yet. This is only to float a balloon, so we can, so people can see whether or not they can see a balloon.
I just want to add one thing. I know there's strong feelings around this, and I'm not saying this to sway anybody, I'm just giving information. My understanding is, even if we keep Ojikowskis, we still need something in Norfolk. Um, that's not gonna provide full coverage up to the Durham Line and to the Ice Pavilion. So, the problem that we're running into is that we need something in Norfolk. Our options are extremely limited, and the fact that it's on town property and that we could potentially financially benefit from, you know, having the tower there, is why this is being looked at again. Otherwise, they don't know what they're gonna do to get, to gain that coverage. And again, I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or the other, I know there's strong feelings, but whether we keep Ojikowskis, we don't keep Ojikowskis, whatever, we're still gonna need something in Norfolk. That's it.
And we need to do the balloon test, so that, it's my understanding, we do that because then we have to refer it to planning and zoning under 824, so they can do the due diligence and go through and provide us with information back as to, that's when we would vote yea or nay, and, but we would have more information, because that's the part that planning and zoning does, in regards to it, is my understanding.
I still say proximity is more important.
They're gonna tell us how they're gonna radiate at kids at the intermediate school? With these radio frequencies?
So, I have a question on the telecommunications, and Paul Zito works with the telecommunications committee, correct?
Correct.
So, why is the telecommunications committee not presenting this?
Good question.
You know, uh, that is, because the email, when the email was sent to me and Mr. Petiandria on, uh, March 31st, you know, again, I'm not working with the Communications Subcommittee. Can't speak to that. The issue last time was that when the balloon was flown, it was flown with leaves on the trees, and that that hindered the ability to visualize it. So, as you may be noticing, the, the leaves are starting to bloom. And if you want to, consider this location, and avoid the concern that was raised last time about there being leaves on the trees. We have a very finite window to fly a balloon.
Yeah, honestly, I have, my personal opinion, I have no problem flying a balloon, because the balloon doesn't do anything. The balloon doesn't put radio waves in the air, doesn't do anything. It actually gives us knowledge. And knowledge is power. My question is, why is telecommunications was, seem to be so excited to be the people of, of Tower, it's called Tower Talk, but they're not talking Tower.
You know, again, to-
And that's concerning to me.
Right. This is about gathering information, to provide information to a lot of-
I have no problem with a balloon.
And, you know, getting into the, the weeds of why or why not, I can't, again, I can't get into. But what I can, all I can say is, I think it's, it's the obligation of me and staff to provide you with as much information that we can, so you can make an informed decision. And that's all we're trying to do.
So on the balloon test, who is doing the visibility, the balloon goes up, who's looking to make the determination of?
Anyone, anyone. In other words, an adjoining property owner.
So you notified all the adjoining property owners by mail?
So that's what I'm saying.
That was, I believe, how do we do it last time?
So who, who noticed, who notified all the adjoining property owners? That's my question.
I, I, I don't know that there was any.
So, we're gonna put up a balloon without notifying anybody. So we're gonna do a shot-in-the-dark bullshit thing like this, with no notification to anybody that a balloon is going up for a certain amount of hours. This is piss-poor planning, piss-poor planning on the town's part. Piss-poor planning, not notifying the council people of this. You've got maps and everything else. We made friggin', numerous times, we said, "Don't put something on the agenda like this."
Michael, this is not my issue.
Well, whose issue is it? Mike, you put it on the agenda?
No, I did not. I, I know. Michael, I did not. This is not my issue.
How the agenda come out?
I am not driving it.
We amended the agenda tonight.
You amended the agenda tonight, Mike. I did not add it.
In, in all fairness, it got on the agenda because I raised the concern with council members to say, "If you want to float a balloon, there's a finite window for the legal."
Yeah, so we're gonna float a balloon, we're gonna float a balloon with nobody knowing a balloon is going up in the damn air.
You don't have to float a balloon.
That doesn't make any sense.
It's a, that's a, that's a decision for this body.
And why isn't the town, why is the town attorney doing this? Why isn't it somebody from the committee? Why are you pushing this to the extent that you are?
I'm not pushing it.
Yes, you are. Why are you presenting this to the council?
Because I am, and I was asked to. And I take exception to any suggestion that I'm doing it for any reason other than provide this council with information.
I can't see.
If you, if you don't want to float a balloon, vote no. It's, it's-
To me, the more, as I keep saying, I'm a broken record. It's the proximity more than it is the visibility of a balloon.
But we aren't even there yet.
Can we get more information from the committee?
I don't understand, wait, can somebody explain to me why we're putting up a balloon without notifying any residents? Can somebody explain that to them?
I, I don't know.
Why, why are we doing this without notifying a resident in the town that a balloon is going up in their backyard? And if you- And if you see it, you can object to it.
Well, we couldn't notify them yet because we haven't approved it.
Yeah, right.
So once we approve it, then we can send out the reverse nine-one-one call to let them know. That's the quickest way to notify them.
We could get, we could get an adjourners list and we could have letters hand delivered. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things we can do.
But we can't notify until we approve.
I wouldn't mind seeing that balloon.
But he's saying Monday. Announcing and notifying people by Monday, even a reverse nine-one-one, I, if people are at work, you know, they can't be home.
I, I, I agree. I, I don't have a problem with a balloon test on face value, but if we're not able to duly notify citizens, what's the point?
How do we do that quickly?
You don't.
Again-
Well, no, you do. I mean, I mean, the schools do it.
You do it by mail.
Every snowstorm, every bad weather, I mean, you can definitely do it.
You can, you can do a balloon test whenever you want, but understand, we can't control nature. So, that's the issue here. If you don't want to do it on Monday, you want to do it in three weeks from now so you can put notice in the paper and/or notice by, by mail, you can do that, that's fine. But you're gonna have leaves growing bigger on the trees, and that was the concern last time. That's the only reason why we're here.
You're saying last time we did it with leaves on the trees? Wouldn't it be worse if there are no? So it's just, if, if this council rejected it when there were leaves on the trees, why would it be better?
We, we didn't reject the balloon test.
I thought you said we did this before at a different type?
We did, but there were leaves on the tree.
That's what I'm saying, so if we rejected it when there were leaves on the trees-
Yeah, but it wasn't rejected because of the sign of the balloon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the concern was that with the leaves on the trees, people were blocked, that the leaves may have shielded what people would have otherwise seen. So we should have done it without leaves on the trees. So that was the concern last time. You know, uh, and again, whether you do it on Monday, whether you do it in a Monday in June, that's your decision. You know, do it whenever you want, don't do it at all.
And the next time, next time this comes up there in December, there'll be snow on the ground, so we'll be all set.
I have, I have someone that would like to make a comment. Victor, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I really don't even want to speak anymore on any of the committees, but I'll give you a nice shot. The committee, we're at a site right now, I spoke to Marie, I spoke to several council members, and I spoke to Vinnie, and some committee members in here, that the issue is, without the balloon test, we have no information. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of where it's going, but we need something to start with. I oppose it because it's at a school, so I can make it clear to everybody, but we need something. We have a consultant that's asking for it. We paid him fifty thousand dollars and we can't give him what we need. That's a tough spot for us. The balloon test has no harm to anybody, it's going to go in the air, it's going to give us data. What kind of data? I don't know what they tied to the balloon, there must be some reason they wanted it at a hundred and sixty feet. He asked for it in writing. He emailed me, I'm at the point where I'm, I, I don't even want to answer questions. From doing towers, we probably did seventy percent of them in the state, without this data, your, your hands are tied. Is it a good location at the school? No, but it's a starting point for where we need. The ice ring might be another one. The ambulance center is out of the question, the body of the land is too small, I can't go there. The balloon test is just a starting point. And just so I'm clear, I'm on the same page with Houseman Doody and Diamond. I'm not in favor of where it's got to go at all, but it's a starting point. I don't know if that helps.
Thanks, Victor.
And what does it cost to float the balloon?
It's free.
It's not costing the town any money.
Float the balloon and try to get the word out.
You know, I believe the, the balloon costs, the balloon float costs around six thousand dollars, but that, that's not at the town's expense.
Why are we going to float a balloon there if we're not going to put a tower there? Or people on this council are going to take, um, responsibility for kids getting radiated by the radio waves coming off the tower?
Well, I, I don't know.
There's, there's, uh, isn't there, um, Mr. Petiandria, isn't there a tower, weren't they talking about a tower in the water company property? Water tower? That they could use?
We're running out of resources.
Is that still viable or not?
We have another committee member in here with us.
They said something called Tilcon, they thought, they thought for the new police station, in the back of the new police station.
Mike Wallace also contacted me, I think last week, Clint. He's got a good report with the owner of, uh, the Ice Pavilion, I don't remember his name. Um, if we can put a tower in the back of the police station, and if we can't put it, it has to be publicly owned. Times are the essence right now. You know, the permanent project, many's moving forward in the police department. I just don't have the information, neither does the committee, i- it's a sore subject, obviously, but it's a starting point. Because what it will do is it'll give the proximity of where we got to go. School is out of the question, location's out of the question, but we got to do something. Public safety's at risk, environment are hugely at risk, and police department's at risk. So, if we don't at least do what the consultant's asking for, I feel that the liability will end up on us. Is it the greatest location? No, but they're working through other things, so the Ice Pavilion just came up last week, that's another location we have to look into.
There was one on Young Zapple Orchard Road that wound for huge, there was-
So Victor, yes, being experienced at this type of thing, towers, do you recommend we fly, we float a balloon for informational purposes?
It's a weird question.
Well, really, I mean, that's, because we're not approving it, we're not approving a tower, we're just, we're just trying to get data and information. That's from my understanding, I think you even mentioned that, that you've got a-
As long as you take what I'm saying into consideration, flying a balloon is wanting, putting it back in the school and the proximity of that location, is another issue. In other words, it would have to be the absolute last resort, catastrophic resort to put something back there, resort.
Right, so, okay, so taking that information and, and knowing that, and it doesn't cost us anything, if we float the balloon and then we, we have that, we have that information, and then we can, dear committee or whoever's committee can move on the path of finding tower locations.
Why don't we just float it at the Ice Pavilion?
With the float one near Til.
We got to get permission from the Ice Pavilion. The issue with the Ice Pavilion, we're trying to negotiate through Mike, we have to get a meeting, and see if we can purchase a piece of their land that they are trying to sell off, and then get it in the town's possession. If it's approved for the tower, it's, it's a, it's a very delicate situation the way it is. I even, at one of the meetings, I own a piece of land on top of a mountain, I offered to donate four acres, just to see if we could put a tower. It didn't land in the, um, uh, the zone. So, is the balloon a bad thing? No. Is it a good thing? It, it gives us data, a starting point, but do I like the location? No. As a committee member, my answer's going to be no. But we need a starting point. We've got to give, uh, Paul Zito what he's asking for, because otherwise, we hire a consultant, we can't do anything there.
So as a committee member, you're no for the power, but yes for the balloon, right?
I'm no for the location of the power, but it's a starting point of all the pinpoints.
Right, 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 right. I'm just trying to make sure we're all-
At a hundred and sixty feet, it will give designation points locally in town, it will see where we can go, and then we can move from that point up. But if it is our last resort-
So the balloon, so, so the balloon test is not necessarily for citizens viewing it, it's more for the consultant being able to gather data and information to figure out where to proceed from there.
To see where that location, really what does a hundred and sixty feet look like? It looks good on a piece of paper, it looks great on a computer, what does it actually do in real life?
And if the town isn't paying the money for the balloon test, who's paying for the balloon test?
I have no idea.
Radio tower.
None I'd like to know.
The radio tower developer.
Is it?
Who is?
The radio tower developer.
Yeah, the developer that's been pushing to go there for six months.
There's a certain reality. If you're not in favor of this location, you're not going to get anyone to pay for a balloon test. If you're, if you're indicating that you want to fly a balloon just to locate, for the benefit of Mr. Zito, no one in the private sector is going to put out that money without knowing that there's a likelihood a tower is going to go on that location. The purpose of the ta- of the balloon test is for you to get a visualization of what the height of the tower is going to be at that location. It could be utilized as well for other purposes by our, by our consultant, but generally speaking, the balloon test is utilized to test, to sit, so you can see how high that tower will be and whether or not you can see it from other areas of the town. If you are adamant that you don't want to put it at this location, just close the debate and say no. But, you know, but then we'll have to go back to Mr. Zito and say, "This is a definite no. The ambulance location is not going to work because there's not enough ground area," and he has to, we'll have to come up with alternative, uh, scenarios.
And the tower at the ambulance center, just so you know, is a hundred and ninety. Imagine what that's going to look like in a conventional order, between seventeen and forty?
I mean, in, in his report, Mr. Zito said, "A proposed cellular monopole funded and constructed by others will be located in an advantageous location augmenting public safety in the Norfolk area of town. Use of this mon- monopole with no monthly site rent has been offered to the town in perpetuity. This offer will save the town two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in site development and construction costs. All scenarios rely heavily on this proposed site." And the proposed site is thirteen twenty-two Middletown Avenue. Thirteen thirty-two Middletown Avenue. Again, just because your expert, just because your consultant said that, doesn't mean you have to approve it. It's your land. So that's your decision. But, you know, but I, I, if the, if the temperature coming out of this body is that you're not going to put a tower at this location, that's, I think that's something I, I would need to disclose to any third party, to say, "You're flying the balloon at your own risk, that you're spending this money without any chance of development."
I thought we said that six months ago when he took that answer.
He did. He did.
Why are we coming back again?
Because of the email from-
Because of the money.
Because of the email from Mr. Zito.
Because of the money.
Paul Zito is actually working, I'm worried, get it, it's a, it's a, it's a useless application. So, Paul Zito, Paul Zito's working hand in hand with this developer. This particular developer, which we're not trying to disclose on TV right now, has another, um, possible site, and that site, he maintains all of the property for these particular individuals. How that came about, the developer might be doing another balloon test on a private piece of land, if they're willing to put up a tower, or communications and that, I'm not sure. He does all the maintenance and developing there. This is how it came to our committee two weeks ago of the balloon test. So they've been working, correlating on other issues, so this developer just didn't come out of the blue, he's working on another, uh, resource that we're working on in town. Without getting into detail because it is disclosed at this point.
Was it discussed at a meeting? Huh? Was it discussed at a public meeting? No.
I, I personally don't care if they put a balloon up or not, but I don't, I don't want a tower there. I, I will never vote yes for that. I think it's foolish. And, and there's got to be somewhere else it can go, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with you.
I don't think any of us want to put a tower there because of the school, and it's one thing you're never going to get away from is the school. I say we just put this thing to bed and move on.
What does a tower do?
Put your head in a microwave.
Is this for, uh, cell phone?
It's for everything.
I'm not going to lie to you, put your head in a microwave, I don't know what it does, you know, it's like, there's, there's stuff that says it does suck, and stuff that says it don't. Being on this committee, it's, it's a delicate subject with the public, but we do have a consultant and, and you got to fly something somewhere, and it's going to cause problems somewhere else. I, I really think we should.
Let me ask you this question, Tommy. Developer comes in, half a million dollars to put up a tower, think he's only going to put it up for the police and fire?
No.
So everything's going on there. Whatever he could get on there, cellular, anything that generates radiation's going on there.
It's going to go up to ten G in a very short period of time.
All right, so he could go to a private party, uh-
Right next door.
Right next door, they agree to it, and you still have all the same issues.
No, that's a little different, then you have to go to the Connecticut Siding Council.
Try to, try to get a private party.
It's a totally different picture.
They're actually in the process right now. And if it goes, it will be in the back of, what, where?
Petrie Plumbing is right, it's, it's right there.
Which is right near the school.
It, it's right there.
What is it?
Petrie Plumbing?
Yes.
On, on Clintonville Ave, seventeen-
Right out of the Aces School.
Yeah.
Of the land that we actually gave to the Aces, or Soul Aces.
Right. It was the old Willie Douglas School.
So it's eventually, it's going to be who gets there quicker.
Right. And it's still going to be visible to everyone around there, it's still going to be right by the school and everything else, that, none of that's going to change, it's going to be on private property and we don't have any control over it on there, and we get no revenue from it at all. So, I mean, it's, I, we're between a rock and a hard place.
Do we have no height restrictions on our planning, zoning, or zoning requirements?
No. Taste it out.
Yep.
So there's no doubt about it, we need an antenna somewhere over there, right?
Yeah. It could still be in the backyard.
So we have this expert that's-
It's a lot further in the backyard than it is where it would be.
So Victor, what do you think?
A half mile away.
Since you've done these before and you know antennas, what is the safe distance that you have to be away from people to have a tower? Like what is, is there a code or regulation or something? So in other words, are we over in an area that supposedly you can't have any towers because there's people there? I mean, are all towers away from people?
Well, I would love to answer you. We're all on the committee, and we haven't gotten to that depth of what we're looking at for exposure to people. I, it's, it's a question that would have to be answered by a professional, what we're getting there. I understand that to all the citizens, and it is a, it, the proximity of location, but there's going to be a tower somewhere in that area. It's just not right now, but when it's going to be.
So somebody's going to have it in their backyard. It's, it's coming. It has to happen, right?
But in somebody's backyard, in somebody's school, you, you know, you got to make the decision of, do you want to put it in the back of the school? That's a pretty loaded question right there. Is the balloon really a, a big deal? It gave a scenario of where you're going to be and a location. The issue we have is, we can't strike a deal with Parsons Hill. We just can't do it. But we're working on it. It's, it's getting there. The, the issue is, what it's going to cost the town and how we're going to get there. My kids go, you know, my kids live here, I, I mean, they grew up in another town, but I raise my kids here. And you have to weigh out public safety versus where that location's going to be eventually. And I think all citizens should be heard, and we got to find a different location. It's, you know, if the board said, "Here, you know, here's twenty million bucks, build You know, if the board said, here, you know, here's twenty million bucks, build around it, we can provide it because we own that land. Unfortunately, it's strategically placed, and as five G enters our area, and if anybody understands, it's the lower the antenna. So, it used to be higher. So, you're going to see these antennas start getting one hundred feet, one hundred and ten, one hundred and one. They're going to be, they're going to be on top of telephones. You're going to see them everywhere. It's not going to be stopped. If I didn't do seventy, eighty percent of the towers in Connecticut are company, and we were putting them in. I've seen all the opposing stuff, but I've seen the mayor of Berkeley, the whole mayor, it's the Christmas trees. They made Christmas trees, but what's it do? I really don't.
Mr. Peet Andria is absolutely right. First of all, the, the guidelines are promulgated by the FCC. So, any tower has to, has to operate within the guidelines of the FCC, which the federal government has determined to be safe, right? That's debatable, depending upon what side you're arguing, right? And I'm not here to argue one side or the other. The FCC has established guidelines within which operators must operate, and they are inspected annually, and, you know, the carriers, as well as the town, would have to fall within those federal guidelines. The five G technology is more based on small cell technology. So, the big towers, the need for the big towers is becoming less and less because of the capacity demands that we as the public are putting on the infrastructure. The concept of five G is to have more small cells in closer proximities. So, eventually, and other municipalities they represent, you're finding them on sides of municipal buildings. You're finding them on light poles. You're finding them on telephone poles. You're finding them on private property, finding them on public property. You know, generally, I think eventually you're going to see them on tops of telephone poles every fifty yards or a hundred yards. There's a federal initiative to make the country five G compliant, you know, because it's a global race as to who's going to become five G, you know, and connected. So, that's, that's the direction that the country's going in. The issue here is what will benefit the town's needs from a public safety radio communication system? And this location was identified by Mr. Zito. If the, if the consensus of the body is, go back to the jury board, then we tell Mr. Zito, go back to the jury board. And, you know, there's no need to fly a balloon if you're adamant about this location not being in consideration. Because, again, I'm going to be hard pressed to get the private sector to pay for something because the private sector doesn't just do it philanthropically. You're right. They do it because they're in business to make money.
We have an emergency meeting, not an emergency meeting, on a twenty-sixth, am I correct? Monday. Can you guys just give us the Monday so we can kind of get some of your answers back?
Yep.
That'd be good.
It's fine. We'll just, we'll just take it up at the May.
You guys got all the same questions we asked. We're hoping to get information. Is it going to change anything? Probably not, but at least you'll have some answers. It's all we got. I mean, there's two of us in the room. There's two council members in the room that are on that committee. It's a, you know, somewhere along the line, we got to come up with something, and we're getting there. If we can strike something with Oshinkowskis and make a base, we can work, you know. But just remember, Oshinkowskis were at two hundred feet when Mike Doody was the deputy chief. Now, they just brought that tower down to one hundred and fifty feet, which we didn't even know the microwaves and the antenna then, all that three hundred foot antenna.
So, so, just one question before we end this. If we, if we, if we did have, if we did accept that location, I'm not saying we should have shook. I'm just saying, if we did, do we need Oshinkowskis?
Do you want to table the matter?
We'll table it to our next meeting, and hopefully the committee can have a report for us, or will report to us.
And you might as, you might as well refer, communicate with the contractor that his chance to get in a tower behind a school on five votes is very, very slim.
Explain that to the developer last time you voted.
Somebody better explain it to Mr. Zito, too.
Could Mr. Zito be here in two weeks?
He works from Vermont and Moley, all the stuff that he does, pretty much geometric stuff on computers. Talks this day a lot.
You can zoom in. I'm going to fix it.
Zoom in.
The mayor had a tower in his backyard. He had to sell his house. You know what it does, man. You know what it does to your values. So, if this council wants to act on it and take Mike Doody's advice, and just close the whole case, close it, and move on on the twenty-sixth, want to give us time to give you... We're only going to give you answers, because there's a few of us, including myself, who are not in favor of a school, unless it's an absolute lose, absolute catastrophe, and you have no choice but to put it down.
All right, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll make a motion tonight, right now, that we deny a balloon test on the Stanley T. Williams property, or Totoka Valley Elementary School property.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Doody, seconded by Councilor Fawn. Any further discussion? Do we have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstained?
Okay, next is a citizen's statement.
So, the committee can just move on to other options, okay? Because there's no point in bringing it back.
Yeah. We voted on it already.
I know it's late. I respect the agenda procedure, and so I, you know, I have to come up late here. That's okay. Michael, I, Mayor, sir, I had my hand up during the sign thing.
Oh, sorry.
The Donald Auger property was sold to the town with the intention of remembering Donald Auger. He's a very historic farmer. I was wondering, on the white barn that face Forest drove, could we have a sign there that says Donald Auger Historic Farm? And I don't know the date it was established, and I don't know if we ever got that answer. But I, I think that location, the families that sold the town, the whole piece of property, want the barn and the house and everything to stay. That was their purpose. So, if, rather than out by the road, I think you would still be able to see it on the white barn and keep that just separate from the dog parks part of the sign. I don't want to see like a tree of signs.
I know. I didn't want to see that either, but I chose the lesser, lesser of all evils. They could have a sign that says Dr. Rosario Dog Park on the dog park.
Yeah, on the fence.
That technically is not part of Auger Farm.
It is not.
That's cut out separately, and it should be separate.
Right, so I think we have to do Donald Auger do justice somehow in the signage.
Do they have a sign on the house itself? Do they put one of those plaques on the house?
It would be too close. No, you need it on the barn because that's a historic park. Donald did not live in that house, right?
He lived over at on the road extension.
Yeah, see, if you know the history, you don't, you, Donald stayed at the farmhouse up over the hill. So, I mean, it's important. They were very record, keeping very good Holsteins, and he was very famous. He couldn't go to an auction. He had to have a buyer, because as soon as he showed up, they knew any cow he was interested in. They should try to buy out from underneath him. He just knew cows, right? The history of him. So, I think we need to leave that history alive. Clerk of the Works, part-time, full-time. What happened in MBIS, my little phrase, no bottom in sight? You going to go part-time again? Is things going to slide through the cracks? Pay your money up front? You know what you're going to pay, or you can pay it like you're going to pay it over here in this mess over here.
There wasn't a clerk of the works for MBIS.
Okay, well, whatever, but I mean, you just, you need a good set of twenty-four, seven eyes on these projects because things get through. We have so much history of not watching these projects. So, you pay for part-time, you get part-time, and then maybe, maybe when I'm ninety years old, I'll be up here saying, do you remember the police station, or you remember the high school? We can't go that way again. You know, I don't want to do that. Tonight, tonight, communications. We almost lost an in-town contractor because the bids were not put together properly. The information wasn't given to you properly. You guys make good decisions when you have the information. There's so much of a lack, and it's not a personal attack. It's a system attack. There's got to be, this has got to be stopped. Why does this man on vacation halfway across the United States have to run a review to give you the information you need to make the proper decision tonight? And to keep our local people paying tax money on equipment, they're, they're going to provide the service to us. Once you had the information, it was a no-brainer, but you never had it. You never had it two weeks ago at the school. You didn't have it this week. You had it today. That's got to stop. You know, I care. I care about this town, and I just, I just hate to see things fall through the cracks. And the tower, that balloon, what do you think? They're going to just put balloons up and not put a tower there? Come on, you know. It's like, it's getting your foot in the door. Do you want that foot in the door? No, you're right. And getting information on your agenda, it shouldn't be tonight as a write-in. It should be next week or before your meeting. You should have time to digest. And if you see something you don't like, be able to ask somebody. But you're hit, you're blindsided too many times. You're making the hard decisions, which I appreciate you have to make, and sometimes without the information. So, we got to clean up our act and somehow get this right. So, thank God, we've got good people still doing the job in town, and they give back to this town. They're going to pay you tax dollars. They're going to buy new trucks. They're going to pay higher tax dollars. They're building a restaurant, which is a separate issue. More tax dollars in this town. So, keep it in town, pay in town, and it comes back to the town. It's as simple as that. That wasn't on the bottom line of the bid, but it didn't have to be. Does that gentleman prove tonight? He didn't have his facts together. Rose found mistakes in his own contract. Is that who you want bidding? How much skin in the game are they going to have? They don't care. North Bradford, they don't live here. So, what, you think they're really going to be worried about how our service is? Just send them the check. That's all they're going to be interested in. Thank you.
Thanks, Blue. All right, executive session is next.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a ten-minute break or five-minute break? Because you kept me in my seats until seven o'clock, and it's ten-thirty now, so...
I brought the big bottle of water, too. Yeah, yeah. All right. Why don't we do that? Take ten minutes?
Well, let's, let's go into, let's make the motion, and then we can all... So, I make a motion, go into executive session to include the town manager and the town attorney. And is there anyone else that we have?
Victor. Victor, how's it going?
And, okay, and Mr. Peet Andria.
Rose, I'd like to have Eddie and Joseph Attello in on the executive session.
Okay, so we invite Joseph Attello and Ed Twinn. And we'll do that item first when we get to it. We're going to take, not a ten-minute break. Let's just take five so we can get out of here.
You're not old like me, Mike.
I feel that way tonight.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Did you get that, Jesse?
I'd like to make a motion that if anybody brings Pop-Tarts to the meeting, we should fly to everybody.
Start breaking them up.
You're wrong. The blood sugar gets low.
That's his energy.
Yeah.
Jesse, you got everything you need?
I'll take notes. I'll finish it, yeah.